Ready to go? Okay, thank you. Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Zaher Brait and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Gary McKay, Dylan Reed, Larry McKay, and Peter Reed, and the Deputy Secretary Treasurer is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabek, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with the computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decision -- I beg your pardon. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers have finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes of the last meeting that require adoption?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Yes, the November nineteenth hearing as well as -- sorry, the November twelfth. So, November twelfth minutes and November nineteenth minutes.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Reed. A second there. Mr. McKay, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Minutes have been adopted. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferrals for this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. First, there are no files to be closed for this morning. Regarding deferral, yes, there are three requests for deferral. Item number five, one-one-one River Street, file number A zero-seven-two-six slash twenty-five T E Y. Item number eleven, two-sixty-three Broadview Avenue, file number A zero-seven-five-five slash twenty-five T E Y. And item seventeen-nine Avonlea Boulevard, file number A zero-seven-eight-six slash twenty-five T E Y. Through you, Mr. Chair, we can deal with these three applications, but first we just need to know if there is any conflict of interest.
Are there any declarations of interest this morning? No, none? Thank you. We can move on. So we'll deal with number five first. Is the agent in?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if you can just read out the purpose and the materials that have been submitted, and then we can have the agent online.
Item number five. Item number five is one-eleven dash one-twenty-five River Street. Purpose of the application is to alter the development standards for the thirty-four-story mixed-use building approved under Site-Specific Zoning Bylaw eight-thirty-nine twenty-two-one by increasing the height and number of stories from thirty-four stories to forty stories, including a six-story podium, gross floor area, number of dwelling units, and permitted projections to accommodate the garbage vent chute and mechanical penthouse. Also, to reduce the percentage of required two- or three-bedroom dwelling units or larger, building setbacks, resident parking spaces, bicycle parking spaces, and the width of stacked bicycle spaces. There will be a total of five-hundred-and-twenty-seven residential dwelling units on this lot. Related site plan control application, file number twenty, twenty-eighty-six-seventy-seven S D E thirteen S A is approved with conditions. And I think that's -- I think that's it, if I'm not mistaken. Did I get everything? Oh, yep, sorry. Forgot about the items that there. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised diagram three. Received October twenty-seven, twenty-two-five. Eight photographs of trees on the subject property. Covering letter from the agent. Servicing letter received on September twenty-third. We have a shadow study received September twenty-third. Actually, two shadow studies received on September twenty-third. Tree protection plan received September twenty-third. Site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the subject property. Deferral request from the agent. And we also have email correspondence from MetroLinks and staff report from community planning.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Simran, are you there?
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly, thank you. Could you just give us a -- outline as to the reasons for the deferral?
Yes, of course, Mr. Chair and members. Thank you for hearing my request this morning. As I mentioned, my name is Simran Batty. I'm an urban planner at a consulting firm called Bowes Fields, and so we act on behalf of Lifetime Developments, who is the owner of this property. On their behalf, we're requesting deferral of this application to give ourselves a bit more time to work with committee staff and Toronto building staff, just to ensure the wording of the variances, and you'll see there's eleven variances there, appropriately captures the relief that is being sought. And I'm happy to provide more detail on this if it's helpful to you and your determination, but that really is the crux of the request, just a little bit of time to make sure the wording is ironclad.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any need for explanation for the expression. I don't see any. And we don't have anybody in opposition to this. We don't really need any need to consult with them. We'll take it into committee and look for a motion to defer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to move deferral to allow for sufficient time for the variances to be correctly identified.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second there? Mr. McKay? Thank you. All those in favor of deferral? Thank you. Mr. Batty, you have your deferral for this item. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll move on to item number eleven.
Okay, item eleven is six-twenty-three Broadview Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached ancillary building containing one garden suite with a south side porch and second-story deck in the rear yard abutting Tennis Crescent. The second story of the ancillary building will be cantilevered on the east and west sides. The existing rear one-story detached garage will be demolished. There will be a total of three residential dwelling units on this lot, two units within the main dwelling, and one unit within the ancillary building. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Redline public notice. Revised zoning notice. Three photographs of trees of the subject property. Covering letter from the agent, correspondence from the agent, planning rationale from the agent, and a deferral request from the agent. We also have staff reports from community planning, transportation services, and in opposition, we've had correspondence from six-twenty-five Broadview Avenue to Tennis Crescent, and we've also had one from six-twenty-seven Broadview Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online as well as one registered speaker in opposition for this item. So we'll hear from the agent.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly, thank you. Name and address, please.
David Eagleman, Design Plan Services Inc., Associate and Registered Professional Planner, and my address is eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two-hundred.
Thank you very much. Could you just give us -- there is somebody in opposition, but I wonder if you could just give us reasons for your request?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We are requesting deferral because we have reviewed the comments received from some of the neighbors and would like for more time to consider those comments received. Particularly, the neighbor at Two Tennis Crescent has raised an issue around property boundaries, so that in particular is an issue that we would like to have more time to look into and come back to the committee at a time when we're ready to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just have to go to the -- I believe there's one or maybe one person in opposition and just address that issue before we come back.
Yes, so if we can call that individual up to the podium.
My name is Alex Benitsky.
Please have a seat.
Didn't think it would take that long.
No, no, it won't.
My name is Alex Benitsky. I'm one of the residents at Two --
And the address as well, please.
Yes, at Two Tennis Crescent.
Thank you. And the question to you is essentially very straightforward. Are you in favor or not in favor of a deferral?
We are in favor of the deferral.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you. It was very short.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else? That's it? Okay, we'll take it into committee and look for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion to defer in order to give the applicant time to consult with their neighbors.
Thank you kindly. Do we have a second there? Mr. Peter Reed, thank you. All those in favor of deferral? Thank you. You have your deferral, Mr. Eagleman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Take care.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can move on to item seventeen.
Seventeen. Item seventeen is nine Avonlea Boulevard. To construct the -- purpose of the application is to construct a one-story detached ancillary building, a one-car garage in the rear yard abutting the laneway, Sibley Avenue. The existing one-story shed will be demolished. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Nine photographs of the subject property. Deferral request from the agent. Arborist report received November twenty-sixth. Tree protection plan received November twenty-sixth. We also have staff report from T T C, and we have one piece of correspondence to petition owned by the owners and occupants on Sibley Avenue, received November twenty-sixth.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. We did have one registered speaker, however, we've not been able to connect with them, so we'll just hear from the agent at this time.
Thank you.
My name is --
Good morning.
Good morning.
Name and address, please.
Pakundo Varela, one-zero-three De Quinsway, Toronto, Ontario. So I'm the architect of record on behalf of the owners, and I'm requesting a deferral for this file on the base that the public notice sign was not posted on time before the hearing, so we were ensure full compliance in advance of the next scheduling. Hearing data is going to be in January.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. Varela. I don't think we're -- since we don't have anybody in opposition, we'll take it into committee and look for a motion.
Thank you.
Mr. McKay, thank you.
Yes, to give signage and appropriate notice, I move that we defer this particular application on Avonlea Boulevard.
Thank you kindly. Do we have a second there? Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor of deferral? Thank you. Mr. Varela, you've got your deferral.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's all the deferrals for this morning, so we can continue with item number one. Members, please make sure everyone has videos on. Yep, okay.
So moving on to item number one. The purpose of the application is to alter the development standards as approved under Site-Specific Zoning Bylaw twenty-two-sixty-nine twenty-nineteen for the two-story commercial retail and office building by constructing a second-story addition to contain office space on the easterly side of the building. A total of eighteen parking spaces, including one accessible parking space for the retail use, and one loading space will be provided on-site. The site has a site plan control application, file number fourteen-seventeen-eighty-eight-sixty-two S D E twenty-nine S A, which is currently under review. And committee had before it. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised diagram three received from the agent. Six photographs of the subject property. Covering letter from the agent. Planning justification letter from the agent. Tree inventory protection plan received June sixth. Site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the subject property. Email correspondence from the planner, community planning. Staff reports from urban forestry, MetroLinks, and transportation. And we have correspondence in concern from one-thirty-three Oak Corner Drive, received November the twenty-fifth.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and one registered speaker in interest.
Thank you. Perhaps we should just have the agent come on. Mr. Palombo, are you there?
Andrew, you've unmuted.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you kindly. Coming through quite well. Thank you very much.
Okay, perfect.
Perhaps we'll just check and see if the person in interest is -- requires a -- is not in opposition, I think, just in interest.
No.
In which case perhaps we can go straight to seeing if any of the colleagues have any questions for you or require a presentation. Just a question. Mr. Reed has a question for you, Mr. Palombo.
Yeah, did you see the transportation memo regarding this?
I saw the memo from MetroLinks through you, Mr. Chair, not from transportation. Was this from city staff?
Yeah, so the city's transportation, they're basically requesting to remove variance three. Is that okay with you? They want to include the second accessible parking.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, can you confirm when this correspondence was provided? I don't recall seeing this posted on the AIC.
Let me just check here, there's a transportation --
Yeah, November twenty-sixth is a --
Yeah, November twenty-sixth. There's a staff report dated November twenty-sixth, and it reads, "Transportation review has no objections to the proposed minor variance application subject to the following condition. The applicant must revise the plans to provide two accessible parking spaces on-site in accordance with the minimum supply and dimension requirements outlined in zoning bylaw number five-sixty-nine twenty-thirteen and the O A D A." So are you -- is this one that you're not familiar with, or you haven't received it, or?
I have not seen this, Mr. Chairman, but I would be happy to -- I would opt to confirm with my client if they would be okay to revise the site plan, because this is effectively a parking plan that hasn't changed at all as a result of the proposal, but all it would do is it would eliminate -- it would eliminate of the eighteen spaces, it would eliminate a few spaces for just regular parking spaces to accommodate the extra accessible space.
Right. So you need extra time to consult with your client?
I would just want -- I would want to confirm that if they're -- because if they're okay with providing the accessible space, then it would agree, it goes -- corresponds with this condition, and we have -- there'll be no issue, but otherwise I'll have to make the presentation accordingly.
Okay, let me just check with my -- with the Deputy Secretary Treasurer and see what options we have here.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, the agent can agree to providing the two accessible parking spaces, however, I just want to ensure that they're not creating additional variances that are not before us today for parking, so that needs to be determined.
Did you hear that, sir?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman.
How would you like to proceed? Another option would be just to defer it and come back with --
Through you, Mr. Chair, do we want to stand this one down? Let's move on to maybe item number two and three, and then we'll come back to item one?
Would you like that? And, Mr. Palombo, would you like that time to?
Yeah, that'll give me enough time to call my -- yeah, we gotta get in touch with my client and then have a decision on this.
Certainly, so we'll continue with two and three, and we'll try and get back to you in a short while.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Take care. We'll move on to item number two. Item number two is forty-eight Norwood Road. The purpose of the application is to permit the construction of a new two-story detached dwelling with a front porch with stairs and a front walkway. The existing one-story detached ancillary building, garage, abutting the laneway, will be maintained and unaltered. We had -- the committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Three photographs of the subject property. Covering letter from the agent. Email correspondence from the agent. Building permit also received from the agent. Order to comply affecting the subject property. And we have staff report from MetroLinks.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
No other speakers. Yeah, this particular application has a single variance before us, so let's go to the agent. Katerina, are you there?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Name and address, please.
My name is Katerina Troopina. I'm working from Stellano consulting. It's nine-one-three-one Kill Street in Vaughan, Ontario.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody in opposition, but let me just see if my colleagues have any questions.
Chair, maybe just an explanation as to the order to comply and how that came about?
Perfect.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, so I'm presenting today this minor variance application related to forty-eight Norwood Road. This project originally already had a building permit that was issued in two thousand twenty-four, which was an addition to an existing one-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling consisting of a rear addition as well as a second-story addition. The design maintained the existing setbacks of the original dwelling. Construction subsequently commenced, and the original permit, as was mentioned, was attached to this application. During the course of construction, the contractor observed that the existing sheeting was severely compromised by mold and unsuitable for retention. Unfortunately, the contractor was not aware of the City of Toronto fifty percent rule, which requires that at least fifty percent of existing walls remain in place for a project to qualify as an addition. Contractor basically replaced compromised sheeting with a new one. Since more than fifty percent of the original walls were removed, the project was deemed by the inspector to constitute as a new house construction, and the order to comply was issued. By the time the foundation and ground floor had already been completed in accordance with the original permit, thereby establishing the building footprint and the original setbacks. After the application for a new building permit, under the new house classification, the structure must comply with current zoning bylaw setbacks. While most setbacks comply, the south side setback is deficient. The existing south side setback measures zero-point-three-one meter, whereas the minimum required setback is zero-point-four-five is the required one. It is important to note that the proposed structure for the new permit, it's exactly the same as approved in the original addition permit. No addition or no changes were proposed. It's identical in form and massing to the structure now considered as a new house under reclassification. Given those circumstances, I respectfully ask for approval of a minor variance to permit the south side setback of zero-point-three-one meter in place of the required zero-point-four-five meter. The intent of the zoning bylaw is maintained, and as the proposed building does not alter, the originally approved massing and respects the established character of the neighborhood. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Let me just see if there are any other questions. None? Okay. In that case, we'll take it into committee and look for a decision.
Chair, I'm happy to take this one. I appreciate the explanation. Understand the explanation is a bit of a tricky one. The fact that the footprint hasn't really changed at all from the original application, I think, suggests that this is not going to add any incremental impact, and I think it's a supportable application. I'll move approval with no conditions.
Do we have a second, Mr. Reed?
Oh, wait, I think the Metro and Warren Clause.
It's a condition, you're right.
Is it a condition, or is it a --
It's the Warren Clause.
Yeah, with the exception of the easement. We don't usually include the environmental easement.
I agree. I think they have the Warren Clause.
Warren Clause for further development.
Okay, good. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number three. Okay, item number three. The purpose of the application is to alter the development standards as approved under Site-Specific Zoning Bylaw seven-six-two twenty-two-three for a new fourteen- and fifteen-story hotel building, east tower fronting Spadina Avenue and west tower fronting Cameron Street, connected by a one-story with mezzanine base building, which is currently under construction, to permit the increase of non-residential gross floor area and the west building height from fifteen stories to nineteen stories. Tower -- yeah. and to alter the building setbacks, the related site plan control and file number twenty twenty-one two fifty-six six three S D ten six S A is approved with conditions. There will be a total of two hundred and eighty hotel units on this lot. We have, the committee had before it the following communication, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, seven photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent, servicing report groundwater summary received August twenty-fifth, shadow study received August twenty-fifth, traffic and noise vibration addendum received August twenty-fifth, transportation letter received August twenty-fifth, wind study addendum received on August the twenty-fifth, order to comply affecting subject property, site-specific zoning by law affecting the subject property. We also have staff reports from community planning, we have one item of correspondence in support, and in opposition, we have two addresses on Spadina and eleven on Cameron Street. We also have materials in opposition from a solicitor on behalf of a resident at thirty-eight Cameron Street.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe there's a second page with some more opposition.
Those were the ones I just mentioned, the eleven on Cameron Street. On the second page, they're all from Cameron Street and the eleven of them.
Yes, okay, thank you.
And two on Spadina, which is on page one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent in person here and we have three online registered speaker in opposition and one registered speaker in person here in opposition as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, are you? Hi, Mr. Hall, come on up. Good morning, Mr. Hall, name and address, please.
Through the chair, my name's actually Arthur Kibowski, I'm with the Planning Partnership, we're both the planning consultants on this file, but I've been registered to speak on behalf of the Mega Hotels. My address is two fifteen Spadina Avenue, unit one twenty.
Thank you, and since we do have folks in opposition, we'll need a presentation, please.
Yes, one was delivered to the committee on December second, so I'd ask that our slides be shared and then, you know, I'll walk through it as quickly as I can within the five minutes. Thank you very much, as mentioned, my name's Arthur Kibowski and the Planning Partnership are representatives and agents for Mega Hotels. Next slide, please. The approvals process has a bit of history here, so I'd like to spend a moment just to, you know, provide a bit of an update to the committee and just a bit of background. The site-specific zoning was approved in, by council in July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, applications were originally filed for the zoning in two thousand nineteen, site plan approval is active and no act was received, although that would need to be revised to reflect the revised massing if approved. And the basis for the application is the, the rapid growth in the, both the tourism industry and the, the need for additional accommodations at Queen and Spadina. Manga has three projects in this area and another one in Richmond and six eighty-nine King, this is a very significant opportunity and in response to significant investments, investments from the province in terms of transit and a growing context in terms of new development, all of which seek additional height and, and massing. So we've, we've worked a lot with planning staff on this application before it was filed, we had several meetings with planning and urban, urban design staff to refine the massing, perfect the application, this, I'd like to clarify that no changes are being made to the Spadina portion of the project, this is, you know, controlled by the downtown plan and the focus is a realignment of the height along Cameron Street. I'll also point out that a community benefits package has been secured by the city and additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been requested by the counselor and voluntarily provided by Manga Hotels, next slide, please. This is just a slide summarizing what I've noted about the context, I profiled three additional projects that seek comparable or heights above what has been secured for our site, I'll also point out that the Alexandra Park Development Phase Two B, which is the northeastern corner there, has heights that, you know, well exceeds our proposal and also located along Cameron Streets, next slide, please. Thank you, and this is a comparison of the, the approved zoning and the revised two thousand twenty-five massing, as noted, no changes to the Spadina frontage, Manga Hotels is seeking four additional stories along Cameron Street, although in a future slide, I will provide a bit of an update in terms of the urban design changes that come apart, that the change was not made in isolation. One thing I would also note, and I should have done in the overview slide, we actually met with the residents before filing the application in July two thousand twenty-five, many of them are here and I'm happy to ask any further questions, we also met with the property owner to the south. Again, as noted on this slide, no changes to parking or bicycle parking, next slide, please. Again, this is comparison between the two, no need to belabor at this point, no changes to Spadina. Next slide, please. And this is an illustration of the, the elevation along Cameron Street, so as I mentioned, the setback to the south has been increased at the request of planning and urban design staff from three meters to five point five meters, which is more akin to a typical standard that the city uses between separation of buildings. The, what this does is actually shrink the floor plate from four hundred and twenty square meters to four hundred square meters along the Cameron Street frontage, further delineating the upper portion from the middle and podium portion of the building, so the outline in red shows the comparison between the two, next slide, please. Just a summary of the four tests in the time that I have, we believe the application is minor nature, given the shift only along Cameron Street, the Cameron Street portion, this results only in a minor increase in eight FSI, a thousand square meters in GFA, so going from twelve thousand square meters to thirteen thousand square meters. We believe this satisfies and meets the general intent of the OP, it's a growing area, it's a mixed-use area, no additional changes are being made to Spadina and along Cameron Street, we believe it appropriately responds to the context, next slide, please. We believe it meets the purpose and intent of the bylaw, again, reiterating the changes around focusing height along Cameron Streets and no changes to Spadina, and for the reasons mentioned earlier in this presentation, we believe these changes are desirable for this development and for the area, which is fast-growing, thank you.
Thank you very much, welcome. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions at this point, if not, we'll go through opposition.
I'm available, yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, when you made the zoning amendment application, how many stories were you asking for at that time?
Initially?
Yeah, initially.
The initial application was, if I recall correctly, for fifteen and seventeen stories, so fifteen along Spadina Street and Spadina Avenue, sorry, and through the chair, we were at seventeen stories along Cameron Street.
Thanks very much.
Just a quick question on my part, you mentioned that the, one of the changes would be the FSI from, was it eight to twelve, eight to ten or eight to twelve?
Eight, eight percent increase, so ten, I have my numbers here, I believe it's ten point five, four five.
Is that the totality of the project, not just Cameron Street?
Correct.
Okay, so Cameron Street would actually, would it be more just if you looked at Cameron Street on its own?
Well, to be honest, through the chair, this is one building, just to clarify, it is one hotel project, so we've always viewed the FSI as a totality, and, you know, it didn't have the benefit of, you know, fully explaining the massing, the buildings have been split actually in response to the building to the north, we were aware of an amenity terrace directly to our north of us and the zoning actually allows us, you know, before we amended it, twenty-eight meters just flat across the site, we felt that was actually a bigger impact and to residents to the north and that terrace, so actually splitting into the two building elements, I'll call them, felt like an appropriate and desirable thing to do for this context, so that's the reasoning between kind of the two staggering heights.
Thank you very much.
Chair, can I just have a clarification question if I might? You mentioned you had approval for seventeen, I'm just looking at your cover letter and in your cover letter, you refers, I don't know if you have it in front of you?
I do.
Third paragraph down, it says, the permitted height of the west side will be increased from fifteen stories to nineteen, you said seventeen, I thought I heard you say seventeen.
The original application as filed in two thousand nineteen was for fifteen and seventeen story building.
You've subsequently got approval for seventeen?
Approval, the, the final approved massing was fourteen and fifteen stories.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Yes.
Yeah, noted that in your cover letter as well.
My understanding is that that was as a result of negotiations with the city and the community, is that right, from seventeen to fifteen?
It was a variety of factors, you know, there was a lot of negotiations with the community, we met with them in July, as I mentioned, we met with them previously as part of the zoning process, there was a lot of, you know, massaging of the massing throughout that process and, you know, that's reflective in, in the zoning process itself, taking the time that it did, but, you know, that's, I would say that's correct, you know, we did, we did have several changes, several submissions, three, if I recall correctly, and then site plan approval.
So Sabrina, the, the purpose speaks to fourteen and fifteen story going to fifteen, from fifteen to nineteen, so do we need to amend the purpose to reflect this?
No, sorry, the.
I'm, I'm confused on this one.
So they, they applied for seventeen after negotiations and city whatever ended up with fifteen, so now they have permission for fifteen.
No, he just said he had permission for seventeen.
No, they applied for seventeen and then after all the negotiations and process, the eventual approval was for fifteen.
Okay, that's, okay, helps me understand it, I, so right now you have permission for fifteen and you're seeking nineteen.
That is correct, through the chair.
Thank you.
A little thick on this one.
It's, um, through the chair, I, you know, I had to be brief, but there, you know, there were a few submissions and obviously I couldn't cover everything, but I'm here to answer any questions and clarify the history of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully you'll get a chance to clarify as people come up with concerns and people to do that, thank you very kindly, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to people in opposition that are in the room. Ah, please come forward, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Ramsey Leung, I'm a resident homeowner at one eighty-eight Spadina, apartment five zero six, which is immediately north of the site, I've lived there for fourteen years and my grandparents before me since nineteen ninety-five, I'm also an OAA-registered architect. I'm not here opposing the hotel as a use, I'm opposing a four-story increase in the west tower that fails the four tests under section forty-five, paragraph one of the Planning Act. Test one, is this a minor, a variance minor? A four-story increase over thirteen meters is not minor, it materially alters massing, shadow length, scale and enclosure for adjacent residents, this is not a technical refinement, it's a substantial change that redistributes impacts that were never tested during the original approval. A change of this magnitude cannot be treated as minor simply because it's framed as a revision rather than a new proposal. Test two, is the proposal desirable for the site? Desirability must include livability, not only economic narrative, the applicant emphasizes tourism revenue and job creation, but those factors do not establish site-level appropriateness. The question before you is whether this increase imposes an unreasonable impact on immediate neighbors like the one eighty-six, one eighty Spadina, eighty-eight Spadina building. The applicant's own studies show increased shadowing, yet they apply no standard for what becomes unreasonable shadowing. The shadow studies show differences between the revised application and the initial application, but they don't show what's acceptable in terms of shadowing. Our courtyard at one eighty-eight Spadina is not ornamental, it's shared circulation, daylight access and open space for daily use of the residents, it's a legitimate planning interest and it's materially compromised right now. Test three, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of zoning? The applicant claims that increased setback, narrowed floor plates and the division into two towers preserve zoning intent, but zoning intent is not preserved by compensating after the fact for a violation, it's preserved by not violating the envelope in the first place. Increasing setbacks from three to five point five meters does not fulfill the bylaw, it demonstrates the breach of the bylaw's intent. Envelope and height restrictions exist precisely to control shadowing, sky view and overbuild and the design that exceeds this envelope and mitigates afterwards is not compliant, it confirms the zoning intent was breached. Same logic applies to the two-tower argument you just heard, dividing the building into two may be better than one, but better than worse is not the test before you today, the test is whether the proposal conforms. The applicant further argues that taller towers nearby should justify this new height, but zoning does not evolve by momentum and approvals three blocks south of Queen or north at Dunas or elsewhere do not govern this site, context here is defined by adjacency, not by the tallest building that you can see. Test four, does the proposal maintain the official plan? The official plan supports growth, but not growth at any cost, it requires intensification that fits its context, protects residential livability and limits undue impact, transit proximity does not override these principles, planning is where growth is balanced, not where impact is waived. So economic benefits alone do not prove conformity to the official plan, if they did, zoning would have no function at all. In closing, the applicant asks you to equate economic speculation with planning compliance, but these are not equivalent, if they were, zoning would not exist. I respectfully request that the committee refuse this variance as not minor and not justified under the four tests, or at a minimum, defer until neighboring impact to the one eighty-six, one eighty-eight building has been clearly demonstrated as reasonable and at this moment I do not believe it is, thank you.
Thank you very much, let me just see, oh, Mr. Reed's got a question for you.
I'm just wondering if you could speak specifically to the difference that these four stories will make to yourself and to the residents of your building.
Specifically speaking for the one eighty-six, the one eighty-eight building where I'm a resident, it's the additional heights adds to a complete shadowing of the, the public courtyard, the ostensibly public courtyard of the site and there are shadow studies, I was at the July twenty-ninth meeting that the applicant referred to and it's, I mean, I, I had asked even for further studies of the, of the west facade of our building due to concerns that it would just decimate all light entering the apartments on that entire facade, I did not receive those additional materials, I asked for further visual representation within the courtyard for our, our owners and residents and have not received that as well, so I, I did raise those concerns, it's primarily for the courtyard there, but there are a slew of others and some of the, there was another architect across the street that submitted an excellent presentation outlining general concerns for the, the project, thank you.
Can I just follow up on Dylan's question, so in the courtyard?
Yes.
So the current approved building wouldn't have had the same kind of shadow, there would have been some light that would have gone through into that courtyard or?
No, it's, sorry, yeah.
I'm just trying to get the difference.
Correct, that's the thing, there's, there's some light in the initial approved plan and so my point is that the, the shadow studies show a change, so the revised application is even worse, in my, it's even worse in my opinion in shadowing, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any people in opposition online? Thank you.
Hello. You're unmuted? Hi.
Good morning, could we just get your name and address, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, we can.
Oh, sorry, I, it's Valerie Gibson, I'm a resident and owner resident at thirty-eight Cameron Street and I think Miyako did submit an architecture, architect's point of view of some of these issues, but my apartment faces directly across at the hotel site and in April, you were presented, the committee was presented with the request, the original request for fifteen and seventeen stories and we were grateful, not happy about the hotel in general, but that ship has sailed, so we were grateful that it was brought down to four. So we were grateful that it was brought down to fourteen and fifteen stories, not only for our own shadow, but also all the delivery trucks, the Ubers, the people going in and out of the building, whatever the use of an additional four to four, five floors. There are going to be more people coming and going along our little quiet neighborhood street and more shadow pattern. So I was grateful to the committee for limiting them to fourteen and fifteen. And then after shovels were in the ground and we thought this had all been taken care of and, and addressed, this tiny little sign across the street on plywood underneath the cladding for a generator showed up to someone a few days ago and they posted it on our Facebook page. So we didn't receive notification of this proposal. And it's just shocking to think when I look out the window and I picture another four stories going into that area, I know that I won't have light coming into my apartment for a significant part of the morning. I'm not somebody who studies shadows from a technical point of view, but that and also the, the noise prospect is concerning. If you have even for commercial or business use, you have more cars and trucks and people coming in via the Cameron Street. Cameron Street will be a major entrance for a lot of people. Also, excuse me, for delivery trucks. So I think for me as a resident, this sets a bad precedent. When you go to committee with an original proposal of fifteen and seventeen units and the committee listens to the community's concerns and listens to the architect's concerns and says, no, you need to limit this to fourteen and fifteen. And then after the fact, after shovels are in the ground, they come back and ask for even more than was turned down in the first place. That sets an awful precedent for the community and for urban planning. So that's essentially my concern.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gibson. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hitoru, unmuted.
Good morning, committee. My name is Heather Jordan. And I'm a resident and owner of a unit, seven oh four, in 188 Spadina, which is the mixed-use building immediately to the north of the, of this project that's under discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. You have five minutes to make your presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm not with you in person. I attend, I moved into the building in 2021 with my family, joining a, a community that is stable and has long used the amenities in the building to, in, in particular, the, the amenity space, the outdoor amenity space that's referred to as a courtyard by the developers to our south is heavily used by inhabitants. It's used for tai chi, it's used walking, the children play in the courtyard. And the courtyard is not a bare concrete space. It is a garden. It has four or five mature trees. It has herbaceous borders. And all of these growth plants, they require sunshine and, and water, which, and they're taken care of by the residents in the building. So I attended both of the meetings that have been held with the developer about the original development, which is for fourteen and fifteen stories. And I also attended the meeting this summer when the developer announced the proposal of increasing the height of the building on the Cameron Street side of the bill, of the development. Both of these meetings, the residents of 188 have consistently asked that the developer take care of this amenity space, that it is the only space that's available to most of the families in the building and is used by multi-generations. We've asked that if anything, that any development go on the east end, not on the west end of the development. And when we went to the second meeting, the meeting held this summer, and we were shown shadow studies, which show that we go from shadow with some daylight during the, you know, the mid-afternoon, late afternoon, to something that totally past shadow on our garden space. I live on the north end of the west-facing, west-facing part of the building. I normally get direct sunlight from about one thirty in the afternoon. And as a result of this development, I won't get any direct sunlight until three thirty in the afternoon. And so from my guess looking at the study, and I'm not an architect, I lose access to all direct sunlight from somewhere after September all the way through to March every year. So for a large portion of, of the year, I simply don't get any sunlight into my condo and I lose all access to sunlight on my, on the amenity space that I do have access to. And this is going to have profound, significant effect. The residents asked that the developers consider using materials on their building which would help bounce light from the, the surrounding area into the garden. And the developers have turned around and they've changed the materials to make sure that they are darker and that they actually absorb sunlight because they are photo, they're photocell, solar power cells. And so they want to collect any sun, any sunlight in that area. So we have really tried to talk to the developer about maintaining that spike space as a usable amenity. And what we're going to be left with is a shadowed space. The wind study that the developer has put up says that the space will be acceptable for sitting in from May through September. But the reality is that space is used every day of the year by elderly residents and the tai chi group are there every morning. And so this, this is not a space that's sat in for half of the year. And none of this has been taken into account. And in fact, the developer has done everything to, to increase the problems on that space. Looking at the light context to the west, the, the, the buildings that affect our light to the west as a comparison would be Square at Alexandra Park, which is the building directly to the west. That is not considerably higher than the current proposal, as the planner said. That building at maximum is forty-three point eight nine meters, which is the same as they, what they have now, basically. And that building is sculpted so that light can penetrate.
Sorry to interrupt, but you're running out of time.
That, that building is sculpted so that we get light from the south into the, into the courtyard. And then the other building to south of that would be three-story residential buildings. So what they have now is basically commensurate to the highest part of the building directly to the west. And now they want, they now want another thirteen meters on top. We have no, we will have no chance of having access to light.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you at this point. None? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next person.
Miyako, you've unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Miyako Panalax. I'm a resident at thirty-eight Cameron Street. I am also a licensed architect. I'm, obviously in opposition to this minor, what's called a minor variance. I basically, I think everything has pretty much has been said by the previous oppositions. I did not oppose having this hotel. I, we, we welcome that there is some development that's happening on the site. However, this project that they had originally proposed, which was fifteen and seventeen stories in 2019, with consultation with us, it went to fourteen and fifteen stories. And we weren't super happy with that, but at least we felt that we were heard. And now we're going to a nineteen story on the smaller side of the street, of the smaller street of the two. Being Spadina, you would think you could go higher at fifteen. But now you're going to also two hundred and eighty rooms. So I made comparisons to this, to two other hotels that are very similar. They have a much bigger footprint, yet they are still, one is sixteen stories high and at two hundred and twenty-five rooms. That is at the Hilton Garden Inn, which is located at Adelaide and Peter Street. And then the comparison to the Marriott, which is at Peter and Wellington. Also, both hotels are on major streets. It's two hundred and fifty-two rooms. Mind you, that one is at twenty-two story high, but it's further in a zoned area where there's a lot taller condos and high rises in that area. We just feel that in general, like I'm reiterating everybody else's comments, that the effects of this on such a small street, I understand there is taller buildings at seventeen stories that are part of the Alexandra Park, but they're all facing Dundas. They're facing larger intersections. On the north, the northeast corner of Alexandra Park, there is a twenty-story tower that's part of the development. But that is behind a commercial building, which is also in a tiny laneway that it's going to back onto, not a, a quiet residential street, which is what Cameron lies upon. So yeah, I'm, I'm basically, I'm not going to reiterate anything more that's already been said because I am in support of every, all the opposition that's been talked about. And I had submitted all our info because we did feel heard back in 2023 when they came back with the fourteen and fifteen stories. And now we just feel very slighted that it's, they now want to move it to nineteen stories.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Seeing none. Thank you very much for your contribution. We'll let the agent provide some feedback. Thank you. Do we have any other folks? No, that's it? Okay, thank you. If you could have the agent back here, please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gabasky. You heard all the concerns. I wonder if you might respond, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have, I have a number of comments to respond to, so I'll take my time just to go through each one, many of which have been discussed at length with, you know, 186 and the adjacencies. However, you know, I'll start with the shadow study, which has been extensively reviewed by planning and urban design staff. They have no concerns with the shadow study and feel that the proposed change is, you know, modest in nature. I would like to point out a few things about the shadow study, which has, has been shared with residents on numerous occasions. An alternate version of the current zoning was also shared. We've had a few meetings with them. But nevertheless, a number of the views on the shadow study are actually as a result of thirty-eight Cameron. So in the morning, the terrace to north is actually shadowed by the, the, the Tridell Building, SQ one, I believe it's called. The proposed net incremental increase from the minor variances that are sought today are actually visible between twelve and two P M. And only at the northernmost tip of the amenity terrace, which I believe is the skylight or perhaps one of the terrace units. But the proposed change is in orange there. And then the shadows actually migrate to the east during March and effectively towards sunset. In June, the condition around thirty-eight Cameron and actually the building on Spadina, the terrace is actually shadowed by the Spadina portion of the 186 Spadina building in the morning hours. The proposed, the incremental changes to the proposed development occur again between twelve and two P M before, at three P M, progressing towards sunset and basically the shadows are off the site. So we've, we've reviewed the shadow study at great length. We've tested this, we've reviewed this with planning and urban design staff. We understand that they're satisfied. They've provided the letter of non-objection. And this is something we spent a lot of time with. And that actually, you know, part of, you know, we were speaking about the nineteen versus the fifteen stories. You know, part of the change has to be recognized that the setback to the south has been increased to a more typical development condition. This was a direct result of those additional discussions with staff, something which they're supportive of. And again, something that, you know, our client has accepted. In terms of transportation, I'll confirm that we did do a very enhanced submission to test the specific potential impacts of this change. For the traffic impact study, that results in one additional trip in the morning and two in the evening. There were a number of comments through the public process about Ubers. There's a lay-by along Spadina. That's where, you know, the activity is of the building in the front entrance. And that's anticipated to be the, you know, the primary kind of focal point of that. So our traffic consultant concluded no additional impacts effectively. They also notes that the travel patterns to the site are far less than the previous parking use of the site in terms of vehicle traffic. Loading is completely contained by a screen door and inside the building. In terms of construction, I didn't have a chance to mention it, but MANGA has been holding quarterly, I'll call it. One is yet to be scheduled for the fall, but we've had two meetings so far since the zoning about the construction process where we've met with residents on site. One of them was in the winter, so we met actually in 186 Spadina. One of them was a little bit nicer weather, so we had the chance to actually look at the site together. So there is an opportunity for feedback on an ongoing basis to Chamberlain, whose details are on the site at any time. So that's responding to construction impacts. And I think, I think that's all I wrote. I guess the one thing I'd urge is again, the change to the height is also not being done in isolation with the change to the setback and has been done through a very long and lengthy process over the course of the summer, both with staff, area residents, and the adjacencies. So I'm available for any further questions, but you know, that's, you know, my list as I responded. So I'd like to thank the chair and the committee for their consideration.
Thank you. We'll, we'll go into questions. And Mr. Reed has a question for you.
Um, yeah, a couple of questions. So first, I guess, the question is why is this height being put on Cameron as opposed to Spadina?
So the downtown plan actually guides height along Spadina specifically. There's actually a policy that states, you know, heights along the Spadina frontage. And I'm paraphrasing, of course. I don't have the policy in front of me. Are generally supposed to be within the right-of-way. That was actually one of the big reasons we had to go from fifteen down to fourteen. The right-of-way of Spadina is around forty meters. We landed at a height of forty-one meters, fourteen stories along Spadina. So it was always recognized that Spadina would be that, you know, I'll call it bend-rise, but basically buildings that keep within the right-of-way. So we've never revisited that, that negotiation or that approach to the project in recognition of additional height and density along Cameron Streets, both existing and planned, because, you know, there is a planned context around the Alexandra Park development itself. It felt, always felt like a more appropriate place for the deployment of heights, considering the downtown plan and considering, you know, our workings with planning and urban design staff around that policy. So, you know, what we landed at, we feel is a good approach. It recognizes, you know, the terrace to the north and actually deploys heights where it's anticipated by the city's documents.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, what, how, like, so originally you asked for seventeen stories and now you're looking for nineteen. What, what are the, how do those two proposals compare? Your original seventeen-story proposal and the current nineteen-story proposal? Like, is, are you simply going back to what you had before and then adding the next couple of stories? Or is there some other changes that have been made?
I don't have the 2017 plans directly in front of me. However, you know, I would say that, you know, they're comparable. Obviously, the nineteen story is likely taller than what we originally saw in 2017. I will note, or 2019, sorry, I misspoke. But through the chair, I note again, since 2019, there's been a dramatic change in terms of tourism in the city. Just last week, you know, there was an article about the growth in European tourism. There are a number of large, very significant events happening. There is an opportunity. And this is a very important employment generator, we feel, in terms of jobs along Spadina Avenue. So, you know, a lot of these are, and, you know, quite frankly, it's more expensive now to build than it used to be. There is a number of challenges in terms of construction. We're very happy to see this is one of our projects that is actually moving forward. So, but, you know, things, things are tougher than they used to be in terms of, you know, the economic perspective. So, you know, the approach here is really, you know, aligning, aligning the height with the current market reality, but also. but also, um, but also doing so in a way that we feel actually respects the existing approval. I don't necessarily agree with the commentary earlier that this is somehow a departure, but, uh, you know, we feel this is quite a minor change, um, and one that, uh, you know, is acceptable for the site, given the amount of work that we did in terms of the submission and the extensive documents that confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions at this point? Okay. Thank you very kindly. We'll take it into committee and, uh, look forward to, uh...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you kindly. Okay. Let's take it into committee for discussion and hopefully a motion. Mr. Clay, you look like you have something...
Yeah, I, um, thanks, Chair. I, um, I must admit I struggle with this one, and, and, uh, I'll give you the reasons why I struggle with it. We have seen in this committee and across the city lots of, uh, applications recently for top-ups. Uh, they're typically for condos or, uh, purpose-built rental. And, uh, the, the trade-off that I think we get in terms of what the impact of that might be on the surrounding community is that there is an increase in the amount of residential accommodation, uh, which the city sorely needs. In this case, while I, I appreciate fully the economic development argument, um, I, I don't see the consequential, uh, offset, in terms of benefit, uh, relative to the, uh, incremental impact on the surrounding neighborhood and particularly on Cameron. And I appreciate the issue with the condo to the north. I'm not sure it's gonna be that much of an incremental change, given the, the fact that there was fifteen and fourteen already. I, I do think, um, in this instance, that the, the other thing that's important to me is this is an application that went through a process that involved community participation, community engagement and community, uh, uh, input, uh, that resulted in, uh, a revision from the original proposal down to something that, uh, was grudgingly, I think, accepted by surrounding neighbors. And if I were a neighbor and I participated in that process and then a couple of years later, uh, after I've participated that and got a, an outcome which I can live with, uh, the applicant comes back and goes back past the original application. I think that is, uh, difficult for me, um, relative to, um, people's participation in that process and acquiescence to, uh, the original proposal. So I think the, the impact of this, uh, on, the incremental impact of four additional stories over what was originally approved, does represent an incremental impact on the surrounding community. And I, while I appreciate the additional hotel units and the economic development benefits from that, I don't see the offsetting benefit to the community at large. So for me, uh, I, I don't think I'll be able to support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Any other comments and observations? Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I, I'd agree with, um, what Larry said. I think this is a complicated one, particularly because there is a lot of good stuff happening. I think the massing generally with the, the kind of two-tower solution and a courtyard in the middle makes sense. But I, I agree with what Larry said, and particularly, I understand the downtown plan wants to keep, uh, height uh, limited on, on big avenues like Spadina. But I, it, it really feels like if you're gonna fit height somewhere on this site, it's, it's more appropriate on Spadina and not on Cameron, which is already getting more and more crowded. And it's, it's a very small street, uh, so I can't support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Don Reed?
Um, yeah, so, uh, similar to my colleagues, I thought this was a complicated one. Um, I think, uh, if it had, uh, if it was not in the context, um, I would consider it a fairly minor change. But I think in the specific context, uh, uh, it's problematic because, again, I think, specifically because, uh, there was a whole process and this, this result was, uh, compromised with the local community. Um, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be overthrowing a, you know, a long process done by the community. Um, and in fact, uh, you know, I didn't get a convincing answer about changes, like, you know, was it designed so that the nineteen stories would have less impact than seventeen stories? No, there was nothing like that. So, uh, and, and again, in terms of the economic development, I mean, yes, okay, so they can make more money. Um, that's great, but, uh, that's not really a reason to be overthrowing a carefully, um, carefully negotiated settlement. I, I just don't feel comfortable. There's obviously a lot of work put in. And, uh, you know, in this situation, it's just not appropriate to be overthrowing something that was carefully negotiated, um, through, you know, a short, a short presentation like this. Um, so, and I do think that the impact on, especially thirty-eight Cameron will be significant. And I do think that, I, I don't really see, to, to follow my colleagues' thing, it doesn't make sense to me that you would put more height on a small street than a big street. Like, uh, if, if we're limiting the height on the big street, it doesn't make sense to me that a, a, a small street should take that height. Um, it's just isn't, it's not, uh, logical to me at all. So, um, I, I can't support this either.
Thank you. Mr. McKay, your thoughts?
Well, I agree with, uh, those comments from our colleagues. Uh, in particular, I think getting to nineteen stories, I just feel that the, the minor test can't be met there. And so, uh, you know, if you, if you even fall on one test, so, um, my, my own position would be refusal.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Uh, just my own, uh, comments as well. I, um, I don't think, uh, when we're looking at the four tests, the first one is, is it minor? And from fifteen to nineteen, is not minor. The second part, I think, which Mr. Clay's mentioned, Mr. Reed's mentioned, he said, the public, uh, came to an agreement. There was a, there was an agreement, and if we now backtrack on that agreement, uh, what confidence does the public have in a public body like us? Uh, I think there's an integrity issue as well. Uh, the comment also by the first, uh, gentleman in opposition who spoke, I think made a very interesting point, apart from the fact it's not a minor, I, a mi- minor variance. Uh, he also mentioned the, the notion that economic interest should not necessarily, uh, surpass, uh, public interest, and I think we have to, uh, keep that in mind. So for, for my part, it's not supportable. Having said that, uh, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, Chair, I, I think we've got the consensus. I'm hap- uh, I'll move, uh, refusal to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Do we have a second? Mr. Reed? Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those in favor of refusal? Thank you. Thank you, folks. And now, should we move on to item number one again?
Yes, three. Mr. Chair, we can go back to item one.
Andrew, you're unmuted.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Good morning again, Mr. Plumbow. Hi.
Good morning. Yep, hi, Mr. Chairman. Um, just, I guess, further to what was already, this, this application was already addressed, um, from the outset of the hearing. Um, I am coming back to you acknowledging that my client has actually agreed to, um, address the, the request of transportation staff to, uh, basically revise the parking plan and provide the additional accessible space that's being requested in conjunction with the office use. And as a result, though, I will have to request a deferral to basically, um, properly address the plan, uh, get a revised zoning notice that will clarify, because again, there's a specific, um, in the site-specific zoning model, there's a parking, uh, requirement for a specific parking supply. And regardless that parking minimums have been eliminated across the city, uh, this variance would have to be addressed properly, and we want to ensure that everything's correct anyway. So basically, we would take this back, get the revised plan, get a, a corresponding updated zoning notice, and come back to committee at a, at a new hearing date, if that's okay.
Very wise. Thank you very kindly. I think that makes eminent sense. Um, so, uh, since we don't have anybody in opposition...
Sorry, three, Mr. Chair. We do have one person in interest.
Oh, in interest?
Yeah, so we'll go to that individual, just make sure they understand the deferral request.
Nina, you're unmuted.
Good morning. Is that Nina Christu? Hello?
I'm muted.
Nina, are you there? Nope. Okay. Well, we tried. All right.
Three, Mr. Chair, if it helps. We do have, um, Nina's letter in interest that the members have been able to review, and it's being deferred, so she'll have another chance.
Opportunity.
Yes.
Terrific, thank you. So we need a motion for deferral. Mr. Reed, thank you.
Um, so, I, I'm happy to move on this because, uh, I drive by the site all the time, and it's been empty for a long time. I'm very pleased to see that there's something in motion. Uh, but clearly, um, this needs to be, uh, revised a little bit, uh, given the transportation services. So I, I mean, we defer in order to give the applicant a chance to revise the application and the variances.
Thank you. Mr. McKay, seconds? Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Can I just add?
Sorry, Mr. Reed?
No, thank you. I, I agree with the deferral, but I, the neighbor at one thirty-three did have some pretty specific requests that I, I think are, um, some of them can be manageably met, I think. So I would, I would just suggest that the applicant reach out to Nina at one thirty-three and see. When they come back, um, then some of her concerns may be already met.
Yeah, so maybe we can add, um, as, as the purpose of the deferral, also to consult with the neighbor.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to consult. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Plumbow, you have your deferral. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item...
Are we over to eight?
Four. Five is deferred. Okay. Item number four. Item number four is two one three five Dundas Street West. And the purpose of this application is to permit a beverage manufacturing use, the brew on, uh, brew on premises on this site, also to alter the existing one-story building by constructing basement cave structure, a walk-in fridge and storage areas, as well as a ground floor blo- uh, pardon me, bar and a dining restaurant. There will be an access door between the buildings, universally known as two one three five Dundas Street West and two one two five Dundas Street West and, uh, Bandit Brewery. And the committee had before it, copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, uh, cover letter from the agent, email correspondence from Metrolinks, and we have correspondence in support from two addresses, two one one three Dundas and two one four five Dundas Street West. Okay. And do we have the, Mr. Galbraith?
We have the agent online and no other speakers.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mr. Galbraith, are you there?
Sean, you're unmuted.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Galbraith. Um, we don't have anybody in opposition. Uh, let me just see if my colleagues would like a short presentation explanation or if they have, anybody has a question? Oh, this is your lucky day again, Mr. Galbraith. Uh, thank you very much. I mean, it's a fairly straightforward application.
I think so, too. They're just looking to expand into, uh, expand their existing operations into an entirely existing building next door.
And I believe the building next door already had, uh, beverages in it, unopened.
It was a beer store.
Probably one of the worst beer stores.
I think it'll be significantly improved.
I'm happy to move this one, if you like. I, uh, I have, uh, perhaps visited this, uh, establishment on rare occasions. I don't think that, I don't have to declare conflict, do I? I think what's being proposed is actually quite, uh, reasonable and quite appropriate, given, um, the history of this, uh, this site. It is a brewery already. Uh, it's good to see them expand and make it a full-service brewery. Um, and I think, uh, it would contribute to the Ronsdale, uh, uh, business community quite well. So I'm, I'd like to move approval of this, uh, application with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Second, uh?
Uh, I'd like to second and just, uh, add, add how appropriate it is for a beer store to be turned into a brewery.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Uh, just a quick comment on my part. I think it's also good to see a small business, um, in the brewery in this, so I think that's a good thing. Uh, thank you very much. All those in favor of approval? Thank you. Uh, you, you have your approval, uh, unanimous approval, Mr. Galbraith. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Yes, uh, should we have a short break? Mr. Reed, like, a very short break? Five minutes, ten minutes?
Sure.
Ten minutes?
Five.
Ten?
Ten minutes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Okay, turn off your videos, microphones.
Yeah.
We'll mute the room, and we'll take a ten-minute break. Okay, members, please turn on your videos, microphones. Make sure your laptops are muted. We'll unmute the room.
Okay. And we're going to be moving on to item number eight. Uh, we're moving on to item number eight. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached ancillary building garage in the rear yard abutting the laneway into one laneway suite. The parking space will be removed. The existing two-story detached dwelling will be maintained and unaltered. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, one dwelling unit within the main building, main dwelling, and one unit within the ancillary building. And for this particular application, the committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent, and we had five signature petition in opposition from owners occupants on Bathurst Street, Manning Avenue, Tomston Avenue, and Markham Street.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a correction?
Yes.
Those are actually letters in support.
Oh, these?
It was a little mistake in the in the it was a little mistake in the in the materials.
Okay, and one one letter of support.
Those five letters.
Oh, those are all five support?
There is no opposition.
No opposition. That's even better. Thank you. I I retract. So we had five signature petition in support.
Yeah.
From residents, owners occupants of properties on Bathurst, Manning, Tomston, and Markham Street. Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we have done and we have the agent online and no other speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Tai, you there?
Can you unmute it?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee.
Could we?
My name is Ken.
An address, please.
Yeah, my name is Ken Tai from Tarkitak. My address is 400 Esna Park Drive, Unit 3, Markham.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody in opposition, so we don't need a presentation from that perspective. But let me just see if my colleagues would like either a presentation or have any questions over here. No question? No? Okay. Mr. Tai, it's a fairly it looks like a fairly straightforward application.
Perfect.
You have a single a single variance. So we'll take it into committee and come forward with a decision for you.
Thank you.
Will you, committee? Mr. Reed?
I'm happy to move the motion. This is is a great little proposal. It's in the existing footprint of the garage, provides a little bit of housing along a major street. It's just a technical thing because it happens to be zoned commercial. So I think it's minor and has no impact. So I'm happy to move approval with no conditions.
No conditions. Wonderful. Thank you. Have a second, Mr. McKay? Thank you. Mr. Tai, oh, sorry. All those in favor? Mr. Tai, you have a unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, committee.
Thank you. Bye-bye. And moving on to item number nine. Item number nine is 107 Walker Avenue. Purpose of the application is to legalize and to maintain the rear ground level deck platforms, three deck platforms located each on the at the ground floor level, a mid-deck level, and at average grade, with stairs and the ancillary building, a detached shed in the rear yard abutting the lane, that were constructed without an authorized building permit, and to construct reconstruct the front porch and stairs of the existing two-and-one-half-story dwelling, as well as to relocate the air conditioning unit from the front yard to sorry, from the rear yard to the front yard. Committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from David Faletta, the agent, a decision number affecting the subject property, Urban Forestry email, correspondence with the with the agent ordered to comply, presentation materials from the agent, staff report from Urban Forestry, 45 signature petition in support from owners and occupants occupants of properties on Alcorn Avenue, Walker Avenue, Birch Avenue, Cottingham Street, and Woodlawn Avenue. We also have correspondence in support from 62 Alcorn Avenue. We also have opposition, correspondence in opposition from 109 Walker, 105 Walker, 109 Walker, five signature petition in opposition from owners and occupants of properties on Sydney Street, Walker Avenue, Cottingham Street, and materials in opposition from 109 Walker Avenue received November 26. And I think that's that's the lot. Okay, moving on to the agent.
To you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent here in person.
Oh, wonderful.
And two registered speakers in opposition here in person as well, and there are online and in-person supporter speakers.
Thank you. Mr. Faletta, are you there? Hello? Good morning. Name and address, please, sir.
David Faletta, and I'm a registered professional planner with Bowsfields, and we're at Three Church Street here in Toronto.
Thank you. We need a presentation as we have folks in opposition.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. If we could pull up the presentation, that would be great. And again, while we're pulling up the presentation, again, David Faletta with Bowsfields, and we're the planning consultant to Philip and Danielle Liu, who are the owners of the property and their three children. I'll note that we provided a fulsome submission that demonstrates how the application addresses the four tests, the Planning Act. We recognize that there are actually 51 letters in support, as well as five delegations that are supporting, and then there are two letters in opposition, unfortunately. If the committee would indulge me, I'd appreciate an opportunity to respond to the questions and comments that arise from those delegations. Next slide, please. Just really wanted to highlight for you quickly that the subject site is within an area of tighter lots that are narrower and have tighter relationships to the surrounding properties. You'll note that the photo on the right really does illustrate the existing backyard, and you'll note that there is some planters, which I'll refer to later. Next slide. In terms of background, just really wanted to highlight for you. Again, this is in the submission materials, that in October of 2022, the owners hired a construction company to replace the existing deck and renovated the rear yard due to unsafe conditions. Unfortunately, the renovation resulted in a deck that did not comply with the zoning bylaw. They relied on the contractor at the time. As a result, they filed a minor variance in March of 2024 that came to this committee, and it was ultimately refused. Between August of last year, which is when we were retained till now, we've been working with the owners to bring the property into compliance. We worked with staff to understand what the zoning issues are. We also looked at opportunities to to change the the rear yard, as well as address the order to comply and the forestry issues that were arised. As a result, we filed a new application in September, which is before you today. Next slide, please. Just really wanted to highlight the difference between the original application that was denied and this one. The first two variant or sorry, the first two, three variances are exactly the same. Variance four is an increase in landscaping. So we're actually reducing the variances from seven to four. The fifth variance relates to the air conditioning is related to a request from 109, the immediate adjacent landowner. Next slide, please. Just really wanted to walk you through these variances. Again, these are the five variances that we are applying for today. Next slide, please. I'll walk you through them to really give you an understanding of what they are. So the first one really is to legalize the previous deck, and this is for the lower portion of the deck. And the request is to permit the rear deck to go from zero lot line, both the east and west property lines, instead of the 0.9 meters, which is three feet setback from each side. The lot is very tight. It's a 14 and a half meters wide or 14 and a half feet wide. If you were to remove those 0.9 meters, it would result in a non-functional deck. And again, we're replacing what was there previously. It's also consistent with the neighborhood character. Next slide, please. Next slide relates to the elevated platform. Again, this platform goes it's along the rear door of the building, and it goes from side lot line to side lot line instead of the required 0.3 meters. And again, this is really to replace an existing situation, and it would result in a non-functional area because the door is provided at the far right end. So if you were to set back the deck, you wouldn't wouldn't be able to access that that deck. And again, in our opinion, it does address the four tests, as it doesn't create any unacceptable built form impacts. And it's very similar to what's happening on the right side of the photo to the left, which is a very similar circumstance. So it's consistent with the development pattern in the neighborhood. Next slide is the rear deck stairs. And again, the the existing door in the basement is located immediately along the shared property line, and the zoning bylaw requires that the stairs be set back. Again, we're just replacing what was previously there. Unfortunately, there isn't enough space to move the the stairs to that door, and if you were to move the stairs to that door, it would create functional issues with the with the usable space in the backyard. Next slide, and I only have 36 seconds, and I do have a couple more quick slides to rip through. I do want to note that the previous application had a 3% landscaping. However, those were in the form of the planters. And those planters, now, we've been working with zoning staff to identify that those planters don't count towards soft landscaping, even though they're built into the roof of the accessory dwelling and built into the deck, so they will be planted. We've also added 7% new landscaping in the driveway, which is something that came out of the last committee and a recommendation from this committee of adjustment. So if you were to total up all the planting, oh, all the planters, as well as the new landscape area, would total 19.4%. And again, in our opinion, it's really consistent with the development pattern in the neighborhood. The next slide just shows that we're proposing to relocate the air conditioner in the front yard, again, to address the neighbor at 109 Walker's request. And next slide, just really, these photos illustrate the pattern of development in the neighborhood. You see that these are tighter lots, very narrow, and they do include decks that go property line to property line with limited landscaping. Next slide shows the very same thing, and then there's also a couple of photos in there that show that there are some air conditioners in the front yard. I'm just going to quickly finish, Chair, and I really do appreciate the additional time, that in terms of what you'll hear today from from the other delegates.
Mr. Faletta, perhaps you'll be able to provide that in response to folks in opposition?
Yeah.
It'll come out at that point, perhaps.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
No problem.
And again, our fulsome submission really does address the four-part test. So thank you.
Thank you very much. A question for you?
So so the landscaping is just that section beside the driveway, the soft landscaping that's that's included about 7%?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the to the committee member, that is the only new landscaping that's been introduced. There are planters that.
But those are not counting towards.
The zoning bylaw doesn't count those towards.
I just wanted to clarify. And have you you didn't put in permeable pavers as some part of the plan for the driveway?
Through you, Chair, to the to the member, in our opinion, the the entire deck is actually impervious, like beneath it, it's only gravel and soil. So we do believe that there's sufficient runoff, and there haven't been any stormwater issues. So there haven't been any flooding issues that have been created. But we're happy to kind of take any additional recommendations back. But when we looked at it, it was an expensive cost, and we think it's sort of consistent with the pattern of development in the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly. Any other questions at this point, or can wait till after? Thank you so very much. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to, is there anybody in the room speaking to this particular? Okay, moving on to, is there anybody in, in the room speaking to this particular application in opposition? No? Okay.
Hello?
Oh, we do have somebody, okay.
Hello, hi. Perhaps, I don't know if you want to pull up the letters from Mr. Boag. Oh, yeah, the letters from Mr. Boag, the opposition letters.
Hello, my name is Ella Roshan. I'm actually here representing my neighbor at one oh five Walker, Mr. Robert Boag, who unfortunately, he sends his regret, he cannot be here. He wasn't notified, he's an elderly man, he wasn't notified in mail about this hearing and couldn't arrange to actually attend in person. He wanted me to reiterate that what, he was here in person, March two thousand and twenty-four, when it was unanimously rejected. This has been very distressing for him and wanted to make sure that I could deliver his letter in person to the committee. So I'm here to support, to sign this.
You have five minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead, yep.
Okay, thank you. To Committee of Adjustment dated November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Robert Boag, and I'm the owner of one oh five Walker Avenue. I have lived here since the fall of nineteen forty-seven. I have a problem with the work that was done at the rear of one oh seven Walker. They moved a shared fence that has been there between our properties for over fifty years, and they moved it over by ten inches over to my side. I told them not to dismantle the fence, but they did it anyway without my permission back in two thousand and twenty-two, when they started their construction without permits. I have grievances that they went against my wishes and took down a shared fence and encroached on my property to build their new structure. It is upsetting that this is going on for so long. I have already been to Committee of Adjustment in person to read my letter of objection back in two thousand and twenty-four, and they were denied all the same variance as they're asking for again. I want to stress the importance of offsets along our entire property to ensure the encroachments are corrected. Also, I was not sent a mail, mail notice by the city, and one oh seven has not posted a physical notice yet. Therefore, I am missing the COA hearing session on December third, as I'm out of town. In my absence, I have asked my neighbors at one oh nine Walker to read this letter on my behalf. To be clear, I am fully against what has been built by one oh seven Walker and object this application to COA, signed by Robert Boag. Also, since that date and since the, the notice has been posted, the previous owner of one oh seven Walker, Natasha Galsop, has reached out to Robert and sent a letter of support. She was very distressed to hear about the situation, and she also asked me to read this letter on behalf of Robert, in support of Robert instead. She lives at one twenty-nine Park Road, and her name is Natasha Galsop. She sends this letter on November twenty-seventh. My husband and I previously owned one oh seven Walker Avenue, which was purchased in two thousand and one and sold in two thousand and fifteen. We only late last week became aware of the situation with the backyard rebuilt and how it was impacting Robert at one oh five Walker. This is very distressing to us. Robert was our direct neighbor for a long time and very good to us. To support Robert, we're able to provide you with some photos of previous deck and shed, which I think displays the differences between the current structure and the previous one. There was significant green space. A mature red bud tree was a central feature. The shed was smaller with lattice screens on top to allow light for the plantings, but to also allow for some privacy. Additionally, there was planting beds on ground level just beside the old gate, which again was separated from the parking area, but with lattice screen. In regard to Robert's concern about the property line and the new position of the fence, the original fence had been there for a very long time. It was old when we purchased the property, and we had to refurbish it several times over the years. We never had any reason to believe it was in the wrong place. We do not have a copy, we do have a copy of the survey dated January fourth, nineteen seventy-four, that I believe will be, will you receive then. We can provide this to Robert so that he can assess the situation for himself. Please send our best regards to Robert. Kind regards, Natasha Galsop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody questions for this young lady? No? No? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next person.
Charles.
I have some slides as well, if you can pull that up. So, the chair's opposition, find your one. Actually, you can start with the last slide.
Hi, good morning. Name and address, please.
Yes. My name is Charles Stankovich. No, I think it's okay. That's perfect, thank you. My name is Charles Stankovich, and my wife, Ella Roshan, and I are the owners of one oh nine Walker, and we are the neighbors immediately adjacent to the west of the applicants, on the other side of one oh five, sharing a property line, but not a party wall. We are detached building. We're in objection to the applications, variances number one through four. Please see our lawyer's complete package detailing the issues, timeline and documentation. Due to time constraints, we will restrict today to three major points. Firstly, an application for the same minor variances have already been denied unanimously by a committee of adjustment, and importantly, without appeal. We find it problematic that instead of attempting an appeal, they submitted a new application, which is essentially the same. I say this because it is obvious that four of the five current variances requests are repeats, but if you actually look at their proposal today and look at their drawings, you, they will see that you still need the two previous variances that they dropped in order to make this apparent, this application appear new. If you compare their previous COA application in their survey with their current one, their backyard has magically become longer to accommodate a bylaw they think they don't, they no longer need. In effect, we're looking at almost identical application with the six of the seven original variances, again unanimously rejected. While the applicants pretend to take on feedback from the last committee, the only material change is to decrease the soft landscaping from an incredibly small three percent to a ridiculously seven percent, not even close to the minimum required twenty-five percent that our committee members already pointed out, as the planters do not count, demonstrating an intention to not abide by the last COA decision and stubbornly hoping to legalize their illegal structure by the brute force of reapplication, as they fend off prosecution from the city for a failure to comply for construction. The second objection addresses a blatant lie in which the entire application is based upon a lie repeated in the original application. If we could show the first slide, that would be great. It is completely false to characterize their illegal construction as simply a resurfacing of an existing structure. If you can see by the photos, the evidence there shows that it's actually entirely new foundations, entirely new framing, new bore holes with board cement and a new cement pad, some of them encroaching on our property. And of course, the testimony you've just heard from one oh seven, the previous owner of the differences between the two properties over time. And third, of course, the fact that the current one oh seven owners are presently being prosecuted by the city for exactly the new build, which needs a permit. Our third objection is to address the complete lack of one oh seven's disregard for the configuration of the neighborhood. And the middle slide, the second one, would be great here. You'll notice that they've only shared a conveniently cherry-picked photos of rear yards, without addresses, I might add, and from completely different types of properties from properties blocks away. Our material shows you actually the immediately adjacent properties of the application, which all show mature trees, deck offsets, and substantially smaller decks and soft landscape that all meet the bylaw requirements. No one else on Walker, as you can see from the slide, comes close to the elevated rear deck that goes from property line to property line and so deep in some violation of the rear yard offset. They have built materially a deck that is increased wider, longer, and significantly higher. With such anomalous height, the lack of offset is creating a privacy issue for us, soft landscaping issues for the neighborhood, and a new staircase violation, issues that were not present if they kept the original build. Throwing a couple planters on the deck might be fine for staging a real estate sale, but it does not permanently address the crucial landscaping requirements necessary for a functional ecosystem, storm runoff and wildlife habitat. Again, as you all know, planters do not count towards the twenty-five percent. Sadly, we must reiterate, the committee, that this egregious build was done strategically while we were out of town, against our objections, and while trespassing on our property. It is important to note the applicants have been lying to get letters of support, and we know this for a fact from Councilor Josh Matlow's office, who was deceived by them and had to retract an original letter of support for their previous application. We encourage you to speak to their office. Importantly, the two neighbors who actually share a property line with one oh nine and one oh five are most, and who are most affected by the application are in objection. In conclusion, once again, the applicant's behavior has been high-handed, disrespectful, and causing ongoing grief, breach of privacy, and legal costs for us for the last three years. If the requested variances today, which have already been denied, were to be permitted, such a precedent would be detrimental not only to the character of the neighborhood and cause privacy issues, it would enable others to disregard the CO decisions without consequence, undermining the purpose and authority of the COA.
Thank you.
So I would just, you know, in closing, say, the burdening resources should not be used, you know, to accommodate this, but rather for citizens who are actually wanting to work with the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if there are any questions for you, Mr. Clay?
Thanks. Thank you for your presentation, and we have all read your lawyer's material and some of the background material, so it was very fulsome. There seems to be a number of allegations and potential legal issues associated with your concerns, but I'm trying, I just want to boil it down to, for our purposes, the variances that are before us. You mentioned privacy. Is that, is that your major, what's your major concern with this relative to the variances? Not, not the legal issues or the line, the boundary issues and the trespassing?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
But what's your, what's your real beef here?
Sure, yeah. I think exactly. I mean, again, aside from all the detailed notes, I think if you take the application and its intention, what they've done is they've built an entire yard that's elevated from one to two meters. What that means is an entire rear yard that doesn't even allow for a legal fence between the properties to be built. When we had to work with municipal licensings, they allowed an anomalous higher fence because it wouldn't even be the proper railing height for safety. So not only does this large, completely comprehensive deck allow for a safety of a fence between properties, it actually causes a privacy issue where they can stand and look right into our yard, including a cantilevered bench built into the wall fence that literally is only a couple feet below the wall of the fence, with the children walking up to it and towering down and looking at us. We even saw in our application, their child with two, three feet that just stands, looking right into the yard, into the back of our house.
So would, would you be happier with a taller fence?
No, not at all, because then we had to get that cut down. Originally, it was a thirteen-foot-high fence that was full of pillars that was built into the structure. So no, that blocks the light into our, our yard, that blocks the views from our backyard. We become enclosed in this compound with a thirteen-foot-high fence. So no, we're very lucky that finally the municipal licensings asked them to cut down the fence to a roughly legal height, not even what is normal, just so we could not be towered in. Of course, because their deck is built to two meters high, and all the way along the property to the very end, it creates a, a platform that literally towers over.
So your preferred approach would be that that portion of the deck in the back not be elevated?
Exactly. If, if you look at exactly the deck that is supposedly the same as one oh five, it comes out just as a platform off the back thing and then goes down, which is how it was originally. They've decided now to go from the back of their house and build the deck out significantly to a higher amount at two meters. And, yeah, because of the offset, but-
Or it could be offset.
Yeah, or, or it could be offset. Either one would happen. If they offset it, we wouldn't have the privacy issues because they can't walk up to the fence.
Okay, I think, thank you, sir. I think we understand your question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you kindly. Any other questions for this gentleman? No, not? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Still, I think, yep, still morning.
Good morning.
Name and address, please.
Janice Meredith, and I live at one one five Walker Avenue. Thank you for the time. I'll attempt to do this without any theatrics. I'm here because I saw the sign posted on the lawn at one oh seven. So I live at one one five Walker Avenue, just a few homes west of the applicants. I purchased and moved into my home March of two thousand and eighteen. My hundred-and-twenty-year-plus home was built around the same time and features very similar layout to the applicants and many of our laneway neighbors. My rear main floor door is four and a half feet above the ground level. Similar to the application at one oh seven, I have an elevated platform rear off the rear of my house, and there's no setback on the east side. This is how it was when I purchased my house. The staircase from the elevated platform that exits my door down to the ground level has a switchback that takes up much of my backyard space. What's left is a small rear yard with a small patio and an even smaller garden, and then my parking pad. It's hard to find space to put your garbage bin, your recycling bin, and your green bin, let alone green space. We all do what we can with lots of herbs and pots, which is unfortunate that it isn't completely agreed upon. Of the thirteen houses who back onto our small Walker-Alcorn laneway, my observation is that there is only one with soft landscaping to satisfy the twenty-five percent requirement. That's because it's a single-dwelling home featured on a wider corner lot. Google Image can easily verify how our backyards are laid out between deck, grounds, greens, soft landscaping, and driveways. The remaining twelve homes are very narrow on a very confined footprint. Our rear lots are comprised mostly of house, driveway or garage, and a deck or stone terrace between them. Our front spaces are even smaller and slim. These are the narrow lot realities we face together. In fact, the seven percent plan sought by one oh seven for soft landscaping is a great improvement amongst the majority of the neighboring homes that back onto the two laneways between Walker and Alcorn. In anticipation of this hearing, I used my dog walks to observe the rear developments of other homes that back onto the longer laneway between Walker and Alcorn. Of all of the houses on the north side of Alcorn, which is the south side of the laneway, not one house appears to meet the twenty-five percent softscape requirement. In fact, most homes don't have softscaping at all. The lots are comprised mostly of house, deck, and fully paved driveways. The Walker side has a similar layout, with the exception of a few houses on wider lots that may come close to or meet the twenty-five percent softscaping, but only a few. Again, Google Image can illustrate that quite well. As illustrated in the planner's presentation, the vast majority of decks do not have any setback on either east or west lot lines. This is how it was when the houses were built over a hundred and twenty years ago. To make the most of the narrow spaces, most rear structures also have a staircase that runs along the lot lines. The reality is that our narrow lots are all stacked up side by side and have very limited space to access car parking or sweeping green space. However, the plan presented aims to make the most of the small space. I like what one oh seven did, Walker did with their backyard. The old wed deck was quite decrepit and rotting wood throughout. The tree was not a mature tree, it was under two inches. The deck was a safety and liability concern. I was on the deck a few times, it's soft. It was soft. The deck and platform layout is extremely pleasing to the eye and fits well with the overall aesthetic of our neighborhood. The stairs at one oh seven do not adversely impact the neighboring homes. In fact, next door, one oh five, Robert, has the exact same stair and deck configuration, which appears to span the full width of his lot. In my opinion, not only is there no negative impact on the neighborhood, the rear yard at one oh seven Walker is now the loveliest backyard in our shared laneway. I believe that there has to be some flexibility with these minor variances to support reasonable access, use, and enjoyment of our outdoor space in our narrow hundred-and-twenty-year-plus homes. I am in full support of the plan and the application of one oh seven. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Just a correction, a question. Your address was-
One one five.
One one five Walker.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for this person? No? Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name's Louise Hughall, and I live at one oh eight Alcorn Avenue, directly behind one oh seven Walker Avenue. I'm here today to express my full support for the revised application submitted by my neighbors Danielle and Phil Liu. I face the, my, my, the rear faces, my back faces the rear of Walker Avenue, and I can say from direct experience that their updated plan fits very comfortably and naturally within the character of our laneway. The new deck and shed are attractive, well-designed, and consistent with the overall look and feel. and consistent with the overall look and feel of the surrounding properties. In fact, they represent a noticeable improvement compared to many of the rear yard structures in our shared laneway. Before the renovation, as Janice pointed out, the deck at 107 Walker was visibly deteriorating and in a state of disrepair, and not at all conducive to the life of a family with young children. There were multiple levels. The wood was rotting. It was not a usable, actually not a usable space. The new structure is safe, well-constructed, and visually aligned with the neighbourhood. It also fits harmoniously with my own property and with others whose rear yards back onto the laneway. I want to highlight several of the homes in this immediate block, including my own, have very narrow rear yards with limited lot widths, which many people have mentioned already. Many of us have decks directly off the back of the house with little or no side yard setbacks. Given the age and configuration of the neighbourhood, this pattern is typical and honestly unavoidable, given the narrow width of the lots, 14 to 15 feet. The proposal at 107 Walker is fully consistent with this existing build form. Their reside, excuse me, their revised plan also increases the amount of soft landscaping on the lot. This is a meaningful improvement. Many of the laneway-facing properties, including my own, have significantly less soft landscaping than what is being proposed here. The applicants have voluntarily designed, voluntarily redesigned their plan to incorporate this softer surface, this soft surface at the expense of their own parking space and convenience, which benefits the neighbours and the stormwater absorption. I also want to say from personal experience that Danielle and Phil are exceptional neighbours. They are thoughtful, considerate, and engaged in the wellbeing of our street. They are the kind of neighbours who strengthen a community and make areas like ours feel welcoming and cohesive. Their approach to this project reflects that same care. For all these reasons, and based on my direct daily view of the property, I fully support the revised plan and the requested variances. I believe the committee's approval would enhance, not detract from the quality and cohesion of our neighbourhood and our laneway and neighbourhood. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
Any questions?
Questions for you? Nope, none at all at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. I have, do you want me to read Katie's right now? Is that next? There's a photograph attached to the letter. If you could put that up, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the committee. Thanks for having me. I'm reading a letter dated November 25th.
Can we get your name and address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, it's Danielle Foley, and I live at 107 Walker Avenue.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm reading a letter from a neighbour dated November 25th, and it's on behalf of Kathleen Lockwood. To whom it may concern, my name is Kathleen Lockwood, and I live at 65 Alcorn Avenue in Toronto. I am writing to support, in support of Danielle Foley and Phil Liu's proposal of 107 Walker Avenue. In 2024, my husband and I had our back deck rebuilt. We live on Alcorn Avenue and own a narrow semi-detached home that backs onto the laneway. Similar to Danielle and Phil's home, our main floor is significantly elevated from the grade level. There is a photo just below the letter here. The elevated platform spans the width of our property, and there is no setback on either the east or the west sides of the elevated deck platform. This design and construct, the design and construction of our deck platform is consistent with the majority of the homes within the Walker-Alcorn laneway, including the proposal for 107 Walker Avenue. We submitted an application to the Committee of Adjustments, which was approved in 2024. The application was approved for minor variances for the proposed stairs along the lot line and the rear, and the rear lot line. Having our deck span the width of our home is essential to us and many of our laneway neighbours due to the limitations of our narrow semi-detached properties. Our completed rear deck can be seen in the photos submitted in Danielle and Phil's application package and is included below. I believe that Danielle and Phil's proposal is in keeping with my rear deck and yard and many of the other narrow homes in the neighbourhood. Furthermore, the vast majority of the rear yards and driveways backing onto the laneway that run between Walker and Avenue are fully paved and therefore do not have any soft landscape. This is true for my driveway at 62 Alcorn. The 7.15% soft landscape proposal is a significant improvement from the standard in our surrounding area, and I fully support their concerted efforts to improve the green space in our neighbourhood. Sincerely, Kathleen Lockwood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this point?
You and your husband are the owners, then?
Yes, we are. We're both here today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, moving on to, anybody online?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sarah, you're unmuted. Hi, good morning. My name is Sarah Belzer, and I live at 103 Walker Avenue.
Thank you. You have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. We moved here six months ago, and I'm speaking in support of this application. Our home is attached to Robert Bowag at 105, who is attached to 107. Because we are part of the same building, we all have lots that are 14 feet wide, and we all have main floor levels requiring multiple steps down to grade. Given this, my husband and I feel that Danielle and Phil's requested variations are reasonable and consistent with the other backyards. Our laneway does have backyards in various states of repair, and the work that has been done at 107 is the nicest. I in particular love the green roof on the shed, which is visible from the back of my house. So I am in support of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for this person, Paul? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to...
Hi Kelly, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Hi, good morning. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is, good morning. My name is Michelle Forte, and my, I live at, and I'm the owner of 68 Alcorn Avenue.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
Thank you. 68 Alcorn is on the north side of Alcorn, and therefore the back of my house gives on to a laneway not unlike 107 Walker. I've witnessed, since I've owned this house, since 2007, I've witnessed many renovations to parking spaces, decks, and carports that give on to the laneway. In my opinion, the plan at 107 Walker Avenue is very much in keeping with the design, layout, and fabric of this community. This is supported by the photos in the planner's presentation, which represents the majority of homes on the south side of Walker and north side of Alcorn. Most houses on the north side of Alcorn have platforms or decks that open, that span the entire width of the property line at the back without any setback on either side. The plan for 107 Walker is consistent with the majority of homes that give on to the laneway, including my own. I basically, fully, and unreservedly support this application at 107 Walker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for this person? No? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next person.
No, we don't have.
No more? That's it? Wonderful. You can have the agent back again and provide some feedback? Thank you, Mr Pellet. You've listened to all the pros and cons. You could give us some feedback, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If we could pull up the cover letter on page two of the cover letter. I do want to address just a couple of items that were responded or provided in opposition. Yeah, so if we could zoom into the photo on the left, that's the pre-existing photo that really does show the state of the backyard. So when we said that the renovation largely replaced the existing deck, that deck you will see goes lot line to lot line. And there's also the elevated deck that, again, goes lot line to lot line with the fence. I think a lot of the concerns you heard, we're really disappointed about them. And we know that the neighbours do have concerns with some of the property standards issues. As I mentioned in my presentation, we did spend the last year working with property standard staff to ensure that the required permits were obtained and we're dealing with the lawyers as it relates to the property boundary issues. Also, the fence was regularized, so that now complies with the bylaw. At the request of the neighbours, it was dropped down, so that has been addressed. There continues to be one, I guess, planning issue. So of all the issues we heard, I think a lot of them are beyond the scope and purview of this committee. But the one issue that was raised, again, we're concerned about it, and it specifically relates to privacy and overview. And in our materials that were submitted with the application, we outlined that there's sort of three levels to the rear yard. There's the elevated deck, which comes right off of the house, and that is really the only part of the deck where you can overview and see over into the neighbour's property at 109 Walker. And that originally had a taller fence that provided for that, that privacy. And it's now been reduced as a result of the complaint that was filed. So there is an issue. But what my submission to you is, is the bylaw requires a one-foot setback, so a 0.3-metre setback for that elevated deck. In our opinion, that would not reduce the overview, given the height of the deck. And all we're really doing in that circumstance is replacing what was there before. So that situation and that tighter relationship existed previously. What the Liu's are planning on doing is putting their barbecue there, which would give some additional space to provide for that overview and to limit looking over. They don't stand there and look over into their neighbours. I don't think most people want to. We recognise that it's an issue. And that's really the issue that we're trying to address. The reason why it needs to be in the size and shape it is today, there's a bit of a gap on that side of the property, and to access the air conditioner and that side of the building, it really needs to, needs to be there, and you have to have access. So those are our submissions. In our opinion, it does meet the four tests of the Planning Act. And I do want to address one final comment as it relates to landscaping. We recognise the importance of landscaping. As you can see in that photo, there isn't any landscaping in the backyard. They have purposely built in landscape planters to add additional amenity, and that happens on top of the shed, as well as built into the deck. Finally, the comment as it relates to the permeable pavers. My clients just advised me that they're happy to do the permeable pavers if the committee wants them. Unfortunately, they don't count towards the 25%. We recognise that, and we've tried to find ways to incorporate landscaping. Finally, like, they've made as many moves as they can to make this a functional backyard for their big family. They've got three children. They really want to enjoy that space and make sure that it's usable in a way that their family can enjoy. Those are my submissions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do have one quick one. I think, I think you kind of mentioned it before, but I just wanted to get clarification. I think you mentioned that the, I can't remember if it's the upper deck or the lower deck, because there's two, two levels. Do you have gravel under both portions?
Yeah.
Permeability right throughout, underneath both the decks?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. There is permeability under all of the decks, saving except for, under the elevated deck, there is a portion of it has interlocking stone, and that's only where the basement door is. So there is some storage under there. But again, it's an interlock, so there is an opportunity. And there haven't had any flooding issues at all in the neighbourhood in the property whatsoever.
Thank you. And Mr Clay's got a question for you?
A couple. I wasn't on the panel when this was here before. I think one of you or two of you may have been on it. But I did go back and review it, and the panel at the time seemed mostly concerned about the soft landscaping. That was the big issue. And you've improved it a little bit. Did you or your client consider anything further than what you came back with?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the member. I do want to clarify something. So there's a bit of ambiguity in how the bylaw is being interpreted. And the previous application had a 3% landscaping. But when we re-reviewed that with the zoning staff, that would actually be zeros, because they had considered the landscaping on top of the accessory structure as part of the soft landscaping, as well as the one built-in planter that exists there today. So we're actually going from 0% to 7%. And we think that in our, you know, in our opinion, that the landscaping that's proposed, you've heard it today, it's consistent with the neighbourhood character, and we've really maximised where we can put it without really impacting the function of the backyard. There's limited space for a big family, and they really need it.
I think you mentioned that you're adding a series of planters. So if, did you say that would bring it hypothetically, if that were included, to around 19% of the area of the backyard?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the member. Yes, it would bring it to 19.5%. One of them's already, sorry, two of them are built in today. So one of them's on top of the accessory structure. One of them, you can see in this photo on the right, is along the edge. We're proposing two more, again, to be built in and to provide some additional space between the property.
What's the area of the now revised driveway relative to the backyard? So if you included, for example, you're right, we can't treat permeable pavers as landscaping. But if you included that in your calculation, would that bring the 19% up further?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Through you, Chair, to the member. It would absolutely, would bring it closer to, so if that's seven, I would say that would be well over 25%. That would be closer to...
I know Dylan's got a question. I have one more. It's just the overlook issue. I get the elevated one coming off the back. That's understandable. That's pretty prevalent right across the city. But the second level, which is elevated as well, right? That's elevated off the ground?
Through you, Chair.
That lower level?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the councillor, to the committee member. If we could pull up my presentation, it really does show on, I believe, I'll just tell you what slide.
While you're calling that up, I'll get you to my question.
Yeah.
So was that the photo where the person was looking over at the fence? That one there? Just pass it.
Yeah, that was the, that's the elevated deck. That's the elevated portion. And you'll find that it's five steps up from the main.
And you had that fence up higher, and it has been since lowered, as you point, you alleged to accommodate the concerns of the next-door neighbour. But I'm interested in the lower level.
Yeah, if we can turn to the previous page.
Is that similarly the same height? Do you have overlook there? That's the one that I'm mostly concerned about. What's the height of the fence in that level there?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the committee member. So this is a view from the back door at the elevated deck, and it is five steps higher. So you can see here that that, the height of that deck on the left, and if you want to zoom in a bit for me, that would be appreciated, the height of that deck really is approximately five and a half feet.
So that would be bylaw compliant, right?
That is definitely bylaw compliant, and that limits any overlook issue. That's why I noted earlier, in terms of overlook and privacy, it really only is impacted at the elevated, which is where the barbecue's situated on the left there.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr Yee?
Yeah, I just, there's a discussion about this tree that got cut down. I was just wondering if you could address that? Like, you know, obviously... Like, you know, obviously, when it's not supposed to cut down trees of a certain size, can you just address that issue?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the committee member. If you go back to the cover letter on page two that showed that rear yard, it was really a smaller tree. And you'll note that the previous application and the previous materials, so you could barely even see the tree in this photo, but you'll note that forestry did not provide any comment, and under the previous application, they did have a comment, and it only related to another tree, which is on the shared property line and along where the elevated deck is. There was a requirement for a permit to injure the tree. We've worked with forestry to address it. They came out, they visited it, they noted that it had not been injured through the construction, and no more construction is being proposed there. So there's no forestry issues. And the issue with respect to that tree wasn't a protected tree. It was a very ornamental tree, and it was not in any way a significant tree.
But it already got cut down when forestry came around?
It had been removed, correct, yes.
Okay. But you're saying that it wasn't 30 centimeters wide?
Correct. Through you, Chair, to the, it was definitely not 30 centimeters wide, and we had done a forestry report, and that forestry report acknowledged that it did not need to be protected.
So that forestry report, the tree was still there?
That forestry report was completed after, but it did look at photos and acknowledge that, I think it reviewed the survey and it identified that it was not of a caliper that was protected in any way. And again, forestry staff did not provide any comments that provided any issue with it.
And I think, I mean, we always want to know, understand why a building was done without a permit, so maybe you could address that issue. You know, this is quite a substantial thing that affected the neighbors, so, you know, why was this not done with a permit?
Yeah, no, through you, Chair, to the committee member, that's the most disappointing part of this entire application process, is that Philip and Danielle relied on their contractor to guide them through this. This is before I was involved. But, you know, if you look at what was there on the left and what's there today, I think unfortunate, unfortunately, some contractors take liberties in terms of replacing rather than creating new. We now know that, you know, a permit was required. They had a designer, so they didn't have an architect or a landscape architect prepare the plans, and they relied on the contractor to really guide them and navigate through the process. Unfortunately, they're really disappointed about it, and, you know, where we are today, and we're trying to correct that.
The neighbors do say that they told them that they did need a permit.
We did, and there's a report from our...
So I was just wondering if you could, like, you know, if they were told by the neighbors that they would need a permit, why did they not get one, or at least look into it?
Yeah, no, through you, Chair, to the committee member, again, we, you know, I wasn't involved at the time, so I don't know what kind of correspondence occurred. We know it was a mistake, and we're here to correct it. We've tried to make as many revisions as possible. We have corrected the building permit requirements. We actually purposely paid a fine and have, you know, I've been involved in working with property standards to make sure that everything's up to snuff, everything's been investigated, and we're continuing to work with the property standards department. So our intention is to really legalize what's there today and make any other corrections that are necessary. Okay, thank you.
Chair, one last question, if I might. This is really before us, but given the amount of angst over property lines and boundaries, I'd just give you an opportunity for, on the record, I assume you have an up-to-date survey, and your construction has been consistent with what's in that survey, because people are alleging all sorts of issues around, on both sides, you know, trespass and not on the property line. So I just put it to you to give us your perspective on that. Again, not before us, but I'd like to, on the record.
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the committee member, totally agree. You know, it's unfortunate. We know when you have tighter property lines, properties like this, there are sometimes disagreement about property lines. We do have a current property boundary and survey, and we're working with the lawyers, unfortunately, to communicate that and make sure what's built there today is built properly and on the appropriate property boundaries. And there's a whole process to go through. You know, in our opinion, you know, our survey shows that it is built properly on the property lines. And again, we're working with the abutting landlords to make sure that it gets resolved, and that's all we really want. We want to get...
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKay had a question?
Just on the subject of trees, it looks like there's an urban forestry condition, number one, which is usually a public tree, and maybe that's out front. Is that a real issue?
Yeah.
A mature enough tree that's protected, yeah.
Yeah. Through you, Chair, to the committee member, it relates to the air conditioner that's being proposed in the front, just to make sure that any construction related to that protects that tree, yeah.
Chair, I have one question.
Mr. Reed?
My colleague had asked about the fence height on the lower portion of the deck, and that's about five and a half feet tall in terms of what you said. I want to understand, I am looking at the elevations, and so that fence from the neighbor's property from the ground is 2.8 meters, is that correct?
Yeah, through you, Chair, to the committee member, it is slightly higher, and the reason it's higher is because the elevated deck, it functions as a railing for the elevated deck. And I think you heard the neighbors at 109 note that. It's a safety issue. So if that deck gets dropped, or sorry, if the fence gets dropped anymore, it becomes a dangerous scenario, and we're waiting for the outcome of today's committee meeting to determine whether or not we need to lower it and move the deck back.
Right.
Or leave it as is, in which case it functions as a railing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, because it has been raised, and perhaps you can speak to this, the previous decision was refused. There were variances related to the ancillary building, the driveway, the parking space. Those aren't included in this application. So can you just speak to how you're meeting those variances?
Thank you for that. Through you, Chair, to the staff. So basically, the current ancillary structure is in the rear yard, and it's basically between the laneway and the property boundary. We have to reconstruct it to elongate the parking space and, as well as pull it away from the property boundary at 109 Walker. So that's going to be reconstructed. And then the other thing we're doing is we're adding a landscape strip, which will reduce the size of the parking stall. And that was something that was specifically recommended by the committee, and we're implementing that. So those are the three moves that produce the need for those three variances.
That's not part of the application today?
Correct. Yeah, and if we are approved today, then we will go ahead and do that construction and come into compliance with the bylaw.
Thank you very much. Any other thoughts, any questions? None? We'll take it into committee now, Mr. Fair, then render decision. Thank you. Okay. Who wants to take the lead? Mr. McKay?
We've had quite a fulsome discussion and heard from a lot of, a lot of parties, a lot of people. I would say that my own view is that I could be supportive of the variances now requested, and that, of course, would be a subject to an urban forestry condition, but that's how I see it. If other members would like to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Mr. Reed?
Sure, thanks, Chair. This is a tough one, because I think a lot of the variances are okay in my eye. Like, the zero-meter side yard setback, I think in a neighborhood that's this tight, that is a common situation, and I think to have a workable access to your backyard, I think it's pretty necessary. And I do appreciate the changes that have been made to this version of the application. I think it's materially improved, and the size of a lot of the planters they're using, I think, even though they don't meet the letter of the bylaw, I think they'll meet a lot of the intent. But the main issue I have, I guess, would come out in variance four, and variance two, is that the lower portion of the deck, not right adjacent to the house, but going down, and that elevated part, I think, the fence has been cut down, but I think it still remains a, over a nine-foot fence on the neighbor's backyard, that this is a very attractive backyard construction, but I think that it does, that comes at a cost to the neighbors who have these extremely high fences beside them. It eases access for 107, obviously. I can understand why it's built that way, but I think that, I think it comes to a desirability and impact, not in terms of overlook, but in terms of a kind, a higher-than-permitted fence and then the impacts that that gives. So I...
Please, thank you. We're in committee right now. Thank you.
So I'm not sure I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other thoughts?
Dylan, you want to go?
Really?
Yeah, so Peter makes a, I think, a really good point, and I understand that point. But I do look at the prevailing pattern of rear yards in this neighborhood, and these are very narrow lots. I mean, do I wish that maybe that middle portion wasn't elevated? Yeah, maybe. But I'm not sure that it significantly increases the impact on the neighbors in a significant way. I look back, I did, as I mentioned, I did go back to the YouTube video of this application before, and while we don't, this is a total new application, and we don't, that's not precedent-setting. But the big issue with the committee at that point was the soft landscaping. And this one does do a little bit to improve that. There are a number of elements to the landscaping design which contribute to absorption of the water through the planters and through the green roof over the shed, and that's very helpful. I think, you know, with permeable pavers on the driveway, I think it would enhance the permeability of the soil, and as the agent pointed out, that the ground underneath the decking, and there are gaps in the decking, that would allow that water to percolate through. So I'm not as fussed as one might be over the soft landscaping. And again, I think this is quite evidenced by the photos and the testimony of neighbors that this is a pretty common feature of this neighborhood in the very small and narrow I'm leaning towards supporting, but I want to hear from my colleagues on this as well. I mean, would it be functional to drop that middle portion of the deck down to ground level? Yeah, it's possible. Would that, I guess, then the question, I mean, I look at it two ways. One, that was what had been there before. That was pretty much the existing condition. So it's not like this applicant arbitrarily raised it up. It's pretty much the same height as it always has been. So I'm sort of leaning towards support, but I'll hold my view until I hear from others.
Mr. Reed? Yeah, I mean, it's a challenging one for all sorts of different reasons. I mean, first of all, I think, okay, so first of all, I think there's something in the lawyer's letter that needs to be addressed as well. So first of all, clearly, this is a place where it's reasonable to put a deck from property line to property line. I think that's absolutely obvious. It's super narrow. You can't have a property deck otherwise. I have no problems with the zero setbacks for the decks. The lawyer's letter seems to imply that that's somehow allowed a trespass. Absolutely, it does not. We are giving permission to go to the property line, not beyond the property line. So there's no impact on that issue. If it turns out that they've built in the property line and they have to tear down their posts and rebuild them, then they're going to have to do that. That has nothing to do with our decision. So I think that's really important to clarify. We have instances all over the city where people have built their decks to the property line. It's not usually an issue. So I think that's entirely reasonable. I sympathize with my colleague Peter Reed's concern about the height of the lower deck. It would certainly be preferable if it was closer to ground level. I don't think that's really in front of us, though. Like, there's not a bylaw saying you can't do that.
That's what I was looking for, too.
Like, there's not a zoning bylaw that says you can't do that. It does bring in other building issues, but, and those have to be settled, and clearly there's been discussion about that. But like, and I don't, again, I don't think it would be reasonable to say that the lower deck has to be set in on a lot this narrow, right? Like, it's just, you know, obviously, a deck's going to be property line to property line. It's clearly the case in many cases in this area. So I just don't see that, although I sympathize with the concerns about that, I don't see that that's really in front of us. I do see that, obviously, if it was, if, you know, the setbacks were in place, but then you'd have a bizarre, bizarre narrow deck, which would just not, you know, doesn't really make sense. So then we have the soft landscaping, which is certainly low, but I think it's been convincingly shown that that's pretty frequent in the area. It does conform with what's in the area. Certainly, it'd been great if they'd kept a nice tree, but if it wasn't a bylaw-protected tree, then, you know, it wasn't protected. I appreciate the attempt to do a little bit of soft landscaping. I would definitely think that we have to put a condition for permeable pavers for the driveway, given the circumstances. But overall, I, you know, and also, I want to sympathize with the neighbors, because obviously, this has been very traumatic, and certainly really disapprove of building without a permit. Like, it's property owner's responsibility to find out if they need a permit. So that was, obviously, caused a great deal of problems. But again, that's not really our remit. I would say that we should include our usual, our usual note about not approving a building without a permit. But given those things, I don't think I can oppose this. I think I'd have support of you.
Last but not least, I can put in my two cents worth. I think one of the interesting things in this particular case is its context. You know, we've often, we've often had applications where context is critical, and context means everything. And so I think in this particular case, context is important. These are homes with a narrow lots, it has been stated and so on. So it's difficult to do something differently. It's interesting, I was involved in a mediation with fencing recently, and, you know, the old adage that good fences make for good neighbors is dependent on communication, and it's a pity that a lot more communication didn't take place prior to going forward with this application. But I think, given what we have, the context that we have, and the comments that my colleagues here presented, I think it is supportable application. So, yeah, that's my two cents worth.
The only thing I would add, just in defense of Peter, is, no, is the height, the only thing, if you eliminate that elevated platform, then that presumably would be all that soft landscaping. So that's where, that's where the point, I think, you'd make.
Yeah, that's my main point. And then you would also not have a 9.2-foot fence for the neighbor instead of a six and a half or whatever is allowed. I think that's an impact.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree, I just don't think that's really in front of us. I don't think there's a bylaw saying you can't put an elevated, it's only, it only has to do with the, I guess it has to do with the soft landscaping.
With the soft landscaping.
But it's pretty clear that a lot of people don't have soft landscaping there.
Yeah, it prevails, if you look around, I mean, frankly, it's even worse in many cases where there's asphalt in the backyard, right? So, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, variance number two.
To you, Mr. Chair, variance number two.
Yeah. Yeah, variance two, but, and that's just point two-five.
Isn't that the elevated one attached to the building?
No. It's going towards the rear, but it's only, I'm, I'm not concerned with that. It's point two-five.
It's a setback.
Into the rear yard setback, and so it's, I mean, that's, I think that's minor from my perspective. But yeah, that materially gets to that, that part of the deck.
My only last comment would be that, again, I come back to, it's not like this is a new build. This is basically replacing, um, a, a similar deck with a similar elevation that had been there for many years. So, is, is that good or bad? Uh, I don't know, but it, it, it's, it's not like, um, this has been built up from scratch. So, uh, yeah, I, I'm now personally leaning towards, uh, supporting it.
I mean, I, I definitely agree it's difficult, I have a hard time with this, too.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Now, I look forward to somebody moving forward with the motion.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'll, I'll take a crack at it, Chair, if you, if you like.
Sure, Mr. Gray.
Um, I will move, uh, approval of this application subject to force your condition number one. Um, and also that the rear yard, uh, parking pad be, can, uh, be, I guess, re, redone with, uh, permeable pavers.
And he, uh.
Do I tie the site plan, just to make sure the planters get done? No? I, 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 I think it might not be a bad idea just to kind of, to lock in the planters.
To secure the planters would be.
Yeah. Secure the planters.
But the site plan, the site plan would, would not indicate permeable pavers, but.
No, no, we can make that as a condition, though, right?
Does the site plan lock in the changes to the?
Shed.
Shed.
That's what I wondered, was thinking the same thing.
Um.
Uh, Chair, can we just go out of committee if you indulge the committee?
Yes, sir.
Just to ask the agent about this shed and whether that is the reconfiguration of the shed.
Yeah, it looks like it does.
Is in the, uh, current site plan before us? Sir, sorry, could you, did you get that?
Yeah, yeah, through, through you, Chair, to the, to the committee member. Um, the, the, the revised shed is in there. I, I would just note two things. I think, I think the variance themselves would, uh, require the, the shed to be rebuilt. Uh, but if you wanna lock in the landscaping, uh, we would ask that, uh, you can add that as a condition. That landscaping be locked in as delineated in, in, in the lands, uh, in the site plan. And then we would say that, uh, we prefer that variance five, which is related to the air conditioning, be, uh, be separate. Um, and we not be tied to it. Again, we wanna work with the neighbors to make sure that it gets resolved.
Right, okay, that's fine, I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Can we also include the initial?
For the record.
Oh, and with respect to, uh.
Minutes, yeah.
Uh, being done without a building permit. Okay, Sabrina, did you get all that? Okay, so that is the motion that.
Since everybody's got it, that's great. A second there, Mr. McKay, thank you, Mr. McKay. Okay, all those in favor of the application, thank you. We have four dissent, Mr., uh, Mr. Reed, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Delia, have your. Okay. Okay, so, number, uh, number ten. Okay, moving on to item number ten. Item number ten is two twenty-four Gamble Avenue. Um, the purpose of the application is to permit the enclosed staircase on the rooftop, which was constructed beyond an authorized building permit. Committee had before it, a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Revised site plan, floor plans and elevations. Uh, revised public hearing notice, revised zoning notice, seventeen photographs of the subject property. And email correspondence from the agent. And. We have. Okay, it's, uh, Dominique, the agent?
Dominic.
Hi, could we get your, good, good morning or good afternoon now?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Yes, my name is Dominic Chinchuzzi and, um, of two twenty-four Gamble Avenue. And I'm acting on behalf of my parents of two twenty-six Gamble Avenue, who are the registered owners of the property. And, but yet, this project is my project. It's to be my home.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just see if we need a, um, a short presentation perhaps, or if not, just an explanation, or we have questions?
Sure.
Explanation.
Explanation, please.
Sure. Um, okay, so when I originally designed the property with design, in conjunction with the designer and the architect. Um, I was kind of adamant, the original ceiling height of the house was eight-and-a-half feet. And that was kind of the, um, kind of the concrete, um, objective of what I wanted. Like, we understood that there was a height limitation, but what we asked for the designer was, we wanted to keep that height, we didn't wanna raise it. Um, but we wanted to allow for, to have, to reach that maximum height. Um, when we, so when I built the house, so I did a good portion of the construction myself as well. So when we, uh, worked on, uh, um, removing the roof and finishing the house. The sill plate was, uh, placed at the original height of the house, which was eight-and-a-half feet. And at that point, then the framers can, uh, started from that point. It wasn't until the third, sorry, the second story and the, uh, enclosure was, uh, for the staircase was completed, that we realized. They understood, they looked at the heights and we thought, okay, well, we're kind of a little bit tall here. So we, um, went through the heights and we realized that they were, uh, requested for seven-and-a-half and seven-foot, uh, ceiling heights in the, uh, drawings. And I thought, okay, maybe that was an error on the, uh, designer's part, 'cause I'm like, who would build a house with seven-foot ceilings this day and age? My basement's seven feet, right? So, anyway, so to make a long story short, um, the house was built at that point. So I figured, okay, you know what, we live on Gamble Avenue, uh, the next street over is Cosburn with large apartment buildings. I didn't think it would be this much of an issue. And it, this has turned into a nightmare, I didn't realize it was gonna be that big a deal. So it was my, my mistake, my ignorance, I kind of messed this up. So I'm just hoping some, for some, uh, clarifying some closure to this, 'cause this has been a seven-month ongoing, uh, issue between the building. Department, my, uh, myself and, uh, designers, engineers, um, with regards to the property itself. The engineers and, sorry, the engineer and architect determined that the extra, the additional height over the, uh, the zoned allowance was, was in compliance. That there is no integrity issues with the house being slightly taller than what was, um, permitted initially. And, and, and the building's standing, I mean, the, the building's been up, it's just a shell right now for the last eight months until we get this clarified. 'Cause I can't even get, uh, I couldn't go, move forward with my, uh, permits, the building permit's still open, so.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question, uh, you know, when I look at your variance, uh, the request, uh, you look, is it, is it that little, um?
Yeah.
Yes, just the staircase.
The staircase.
Yes.
In the photographs.
That's right. So that portion of the, that portion of the house, uh, of the tighter, the entire total rooftop only represents about ten percent of the, uh, the entire roof.
Right.
So the, the majority of the house is at eight meters, the, I know the allowance is eight-and-a-half. Um, but it's just that portion that's, uh, a meter and a half above the permitted amount.
Great, thank you. Let me just see if any, uh, colleagues have any questions for you at this point.
Sure.
No, thanks, Chair.
No, Mr. Gray, no?
Uh, just, so the rooftop, so the access is to allow access to a rooftop deck eventually, is that your plan?
Yes, yes, that's exactly right. Um, basically, it's not the entire roof, though, it's only gonna be, um, if you look at the structure in this particular photo, um, on the. It, it, there's gonna be a, a, a wall built. So it's only allows for that portion in front of the door, that'll be a rooftop. The rest of it's to be closed off, we're not, we're not to use that. But in the future, potentially, maybe we might apply for a green roof. So that's one plan down the road, but it's not in these plans and we're not really thinking about that. We're just literally thinking about moving into the house. My parents live next door, so the whole purpose of this project is to care for, my parents are elderly and they own the two properties. And it's a lot of property for them. My mom has been my dad's caregiver for the last eighteen years, he had a massive stroke in two thousand eight. So it's become a little bit too much for them. So that was the whole purpose of me moving next door was to help out, basically. So my, my, my family and I will be living close by, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, perhaps we'll take it into committee and look for a decision.
Chair, I'm happy.
Mr. Reed?
Yeah, there's just the one variance and, and it is very small. I think that points, uh, point seven of a meter in terms of, um, of the, of the distance that's, that's being proposed. And, and also this being setback, uh, central to the house, you can't even see it from the, the street. So I, I think this is a completely minor variance. So I'll move approval, uh, without condition, but with, uh, I'd like to add a further record, uh, that we don't condone construction without a, without a valid permit.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second there?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your, uh, approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you, committee, much appreciated, thank you. Have a great day.
Bye-bye.
Bye now.
And item eleven was deferred. So we move on to item number twelve.
We still got one, two, three. Shit. Okay.
Okay, item number twelve is in one eleven Clendenon Avenue. Purpose of the application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by partially enclosing the front porch. Butting the east portion of the, uh, dwelling in for habitable space, also to construct a front, second-story addition. Uh, committee had before it the following communication, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. An arborist report received October tenth. Uh, and staff report from Urban Forestry received November twenty-sixth. We have before us a single variance. Okay.
To you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Terrific, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Perez, are you there?
Eddie, you unmuted?
Mr. Perez?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Perez, good afternoon.
Did you, did you hear what I said earlier?
No, he didn't hear anything, if you can begin from the beginning, please, name and address and then the rest.
Yeah, sorry about that, Eddie Perez at five thirty-seven Rogers Road. Uh, as before you, we have the proposed enclosed, uh, portion of the front, which is good for like a mudroom. And we're adding a little bit in the, uh, second floor as well. Uh, we spoke to both neighbors and mo, both neighbors are on board, they're okay with it. And we only have the one variance in front of you, which I feel is minor in nature, meets the porters, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you, or, nope. Okay, wonderful, we'll take it into committee, Mr. Perez, and come forward with a, a, a decision for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is a very straightforward one, it's a single, um, variance enclosure of a front porch. Which we see a lot of, uh, in the city. The variance is very minor. Supportable, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I agree, Chair, I, I think this is a, a minor addition. I, um, there's a small enclosure on the porch and then the, the addition above is setback slightly from the eaves. And I, I think that works okay with the, um, with the streetscape and with the pattern of, of houses on the street. And the variance that's being requested is just over a meter difference. So, uh, I, I think it's completely, um, supportable, so I'll move approval of the application without condition.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, do we have a second there? Uh, Mr. Dylan Reed seconds, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Perez, you have your approval.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Bye-bye. And moving on to item number thirteen.
Apartment's open, right.
Item number thirteen is five seventy-one Oakwood Avenue. Uh, purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story apartment building containing ten residential dwelling units. With a covered front entrance at the northwest portion of the building. Six rooftop terraces located at the northwest, northeast, southeast, southwest and south. Aside, south portions of the building above the third floor with one rooftop staircase access enclosure. Also to construct a one-story detached ancillary building, bicycle storage shed in the rear yard. The existing, uh, rear shed will be demolished. And committee had before it the following communication, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Three photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent. Pardon me, an arborist report received October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
To you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Galbraith, are you there?
Good afternoon, hello again.
Good afternoon, Mr. Galbraith. Uh, let me just see if my colleagues require, um, a presentation or a short explanation, or if they have any questions for you.
I'd ask everybody's, his setbacks.
Sure, Mr. McKay?
Perhaps you just run through the setbacks because they're, they're quite dramatically reduced on the three variants.
Sure. So, um, the properties along this sort of stretch are sort of offset to one side. The existing, uh, building has this relationship where the, the existing building is set almost entirely, almost exactly on the north side yard. Um, and that is being proposed to be maintained. That's so that we can maintain, um, an appropriate access along the south side of the lot. The house, the, the, the building to the south of us is set on its north, uh, lot line. Um, that's sort of the, the character of buildings, um, along this stretch. Um, if we were to provide, uh, a setback on the north, um, it would be. More or less a token, um, setback, I think, realistically. And it would affect the, the, the size and number of bedrooms that we'd be able to provide, um, in the, in the building itself. We're since, basically, we're looking to maintain the existing condition.
Mr. Gray has a question.
Uh, thanks, uh, Chair, Sean, so, um, it's still, it, it's an interesting, uh, site, given what was probably the previous use. It was a garage or it looks like some sort of retail or commercial.
Yeah, it's been a few different things over the years, as I understand it, most recently residential, but in the past, it's been commercial.
Right, um, so there is still a fair amount of res around it, uh, on sides and in behind. So I notice you've got some terraces on the top floor, rooftop terraces. Are, is there an overlook issued in your view?
I would say that it's minimal. There probably is some, there's no variances tied to, to that aspect of it. Um, there, there probably could be some, some overlook. Um, we, I'm sure we could consider a, a privacy screen on presumably the north side. If, um, if that was something that the committee was interested in, um, but we haven't, uh, uh, we haven't modeled it.
Well, maybe it's not a bad idea, just because, you know, you've got ten units, it's gonna be fairly well-used. Maybe a little bit of screen would be helpful just to, for the existing residents on that strip.
We have ten units, but they're not public, it's not a public terrace. It's not like, uh, um, an amenity space for the whole building, they're private terraces.
For the roof, for the units of the, on the third story?
The upper floor, correct, yes.
Uh, still, but if your client is amenable, maybe, maybe some screening on that one side would be helpful?
I, I don't think it would be an issue at all.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we can take it into committee and, uh, look for a decision. So, uh, who wants to run with this one? Mr. Reed, okay?
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, first of all, this is very much what the city is looking for with the city zoning bylaws. Um, so this is very much, I think, desirable. It's a major street. Um, it's a reasonably modest apartment building. The, uh, the point, the three centimeters of soft landscaping is a bit comedic, but, um, you know, that's, that's how it, how it, uh, how it plays out. Um, so, uh, and yeah, I mean, it, it's, like I said, very much, I think, what the city is looking for. So, uh, I th- I take the point about the privacy screening. I think that, that will be significant.
Yeah.
Not just, I mean, the neighbors aren't, uh, objecting at the moment, but, you know, who knows, who knows what will happen in the future. So, um, I would move to approve this, um, with the condition that there be, uh, privacy screening on the north side of the, uh, roof terrace.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have seconds, Mr. Clay? Seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I have a five-minute break?
Yep, certainly. We take a break for five minutes?
Yeah, sure. Did you get a fence sitter? Like, there's legislation that governs how you deal with.
Line fence is right, yeah.
City, uh, the city has.
Line fence reviewers.
Something to do with fencing. But, you know, this is, uh, two properties out in West York. And, uh, the one, uh, apartment owner, they've been there for forty plus years. The other property is a rented out unit, but the owner wasn't there. The forty-year resident decided because the, the fence was about to keel over. The, uh, the rented out unit also put a fence on a four-by-four post that was really heavy. And of course, it's pulling the post and the fence we had built. So the other lady decided, get a contract in, and she, there's no communication because we, the landlord or the lady in this case, never provided the other person what their name, address, phone numbers. You know, there's an issue, want nothing. And so she got a contact and put in a six-by-six post. And despite the, the owner, well, crisis. And so they called three-one-one. And now the city does, if you get a, a call like that, we'll be put into the Toronto neighborhood group. So when we, it, it, about almost forty of us would meet in communication and say, oh, for the D and G group. So we had to sit down these two persons. The one person, and you, you know, all your neighbors might be talking to each other. And ultimately, it comes down to, if we have a conversation, we can figure things out. But the absentee owner on the one side doesn't respond to calls, doesn't even respond to emails.
Um, one of, in one of my positions when I worked, uh, I, I was responsible for, there's a, there was, I don't think they're in place anymore, a provincial person, uh, appointed as the official fence viewer. And he, he had two deputy fence viewers. And, yeah, I don't know how this guy ever survived without getting shot, right? I mean, it's just, like, when you deal with neighbors who are disputing these offenses, it's so nasty, boy. Just the, the, the hatred, the legal, the allegations, the threats. It's just, you're right, like, fences, once you, you get into a dispute with the neighbor of offense, they can be dealt with amicably, but more often than not, you have to bring somebody in that ultimately will have to make a decision because they're unable to make a decision on their own. Even if you got surveys and everything else, it's just horrible. I mean, I can't imagine how this person did this job all the time. It's just awful.
It's, it's, uh, difficult, you know, you know, the funny thing about, uh, the sort of fencing issue. When you, when you have people who make things, you know, so this one person said, well, the new post is encroaching one inch on my pole. But you don't even look, you know, where's the problem? You actually see the thing and you say, oh, why? But what she didn't think about is that there was a four-by-four post before and now it's a six-by-six. This is, it's still here. Of course, it encroaches on both sides.
It takes up more space.
But it's just, it's, it's so.
Well, you think, another reason people get fussed about it is, I think there still is on the books, Squider's rights.
Boy, yeah, actually, property is in, in the registry and not the land title system, yeah?
So there was an incident, uh, near our cottage where one neighbor had built the fence like three feet over and really got up in. No one paid attention to the cottage, right? So, and eventually, when the property came up for sale, you know, we got a s- uh, an updated survey and found out this thing. The person who put the fence in took them to court and won, uh, because Squider's rights kicks in and if you demonstrated that you have, that fence has been there for X number of years and you maintain that property, it becomes yours.
That's called adverse, adversarial possession.
Get a little bit freaked out if someone fences on your property because it might be.
I actually have a separate, a separate reservation for this, uh, so I'm going to have to take a break at least for this. Yeah, I don't need to go right away, but like, this, she's a separate craze.
Okay, we moving, we move on to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is four thirty-five Russell Hill Road. The purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front porch, a front below-grade integral garage, a rear ground-floor terrace with stairs, a rear third-story balcony, and a rear in-ground pool. Also to construct a new one-story detached ancillary building, cabana. The committee had before the following communication: copy of the minutes from the, uh, sorry, copy of the minutes from August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five public hearing, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a decision number affecting subject property, arborist report, uh, received on September twenty-fourth, presentation materials from, received from the agent, storm drainage letter received from the agents, a staff report from Urban Forestry, correspondence in support from four-four-two Russell Hill Road. And we have opposition from, um, four thirty-three Russell Hill Road and similarly on two thirty Forest Hill Road.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, before we get to the agent, uh, I'm just going to ask the presenter to present. We did receive a very late report from Urban Forestry. So it's on the screen here.
Is the refusal?
And it, yes. This is the refusal denying variances number two and number four. Um, so we'll see if the agent has had a chance to see this and speak to it. Um, so we do have the agent online. We also have one registered speaker here in person in opposition. So at this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Last name is Brodsky, first initial D for David, uh, three-three-three Bay Street, Suite thirty-four hundred in Toronto. Um, and, and two things, Mr. Chair. Um, I am aware of this memo and can speak to it because I think it's, actually contains a couple of mistakes. Um, and two, I hope the committee also has, I'll, I'll be at a form letter, the letter of support in the file, um, from, I believe it's four thirty-seven. I just didn't hear the chair note that in reading the materials.
Good afternoon, Mr. Brodsky. Thank you.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, that's under the very late materials as well. I'll get the presenter just to present that on the screen and then we'll have it in the minutes as well.
Thank you. Uh, since we do have folks in opposition, uh, Mr. Brodsky will, will require a presentation.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, and some of this matter, Mr. Chair, will be completely new to two of you. Uh, and some of it will be very familiar to two of you. And through you, Mr. Chair, that's to Mr. Clay and Mr. Reed, who may recall an application for this site coming before a panel that included Ms. Chan and Mr. Goche previously. Um, and in fact, to you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Reed had moved a motion, uh, for refusal based on the sidewall variances that were part of that previous application. Ms. Chan had seconded it, Mr. Goche dissented, and Mr. Clay, you may, through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Clay, you may recall abstaining as the chair to avoid a two-two tie, uh, which then resulted in the refusal. Rather than appealing, we did go back and listen again to that YouTube video of the hearing and the architect with the client made revisions that have eliminated the variance that, uh, did cause the most concern. And that's the sidewall height. Um, uh, Mr. Reed, through Mr. Chair, I'm quoting back to him. He indicated that it was the most significant part of the application and he couldn't support it at that time because of that variance. And so we did listen, um, uh, and, uh, came back without that variance. There are the length and depth variances still and an FSI variance as well, Mr. Chair. There's also a driveway width, which is an existing, um, and then as well as what I'm going to call a technical variance for the pedestrian entrance at the front of the site. Um, we have included in the presentation materials the usual numeric analysis that are, that's there. Um, those are pages four, uh, and five, just highlighting for the panel, frankly, in this neighborhood, the extent of the length, depth, and FSI variances, just as a number that have been granted. Um, if staff could go to page three, I wanted to start just with the, this site plan for the committee. Just to give an idea of a couple of things, one is related to the built form, the other is related to the Urban Forestry memo. And so on this quite busy site plan, with apologies, we've attempted to do a few things. You can see the building length at twenty-four point one-one coming right down the center, measured, uh, from the excavated basement, uh, that actually extends a little bit into the front, uh, yard, and then back to the back of the one-story extension. So it does not go under the deck that extends further into the backyard. That was removed last time to take some of that underground excavation away and limit the length and depth. So it's the first-story outdoor room, uh, with excavation underneath those that result in the overall building length of twenty-four point one-one. But the second floor, you'll see there, has a nineteen point one-four meter length, which is quite typical of homes like this. And the third floor slightly less at eighteen point four-eight. And you can also see that the rear wall of the first story does not extend beyond the rear wall of four thirty-three Russell Hill Road, who I understand is here objecting. Uh, four thirty-seven, uh, on the other side, as I indicated to you, did file a letter of support after discussions with our client and the architect. And then finally, Mr. Chair, just on this busy plan, at the top left, if you see, uh, a green, I'm going to say almost stair-like line at the back of the outdoor room. And then there's an arrow to it and it says extent of basement excavation. The tree that is immediately above that is tree thirteen. The tree that is immediately above that tree is tree fourteen. And those are the two trees that form the substance of the later Urban Forestry memo, which, when you read it through, refers to excavation under the deck. There is no excavation under the deck. Their concern is that excavation under the deck would be within the tree protection zone and not only injure those trees, but likely cause their need for removal. We are not proposing to remove them. We are not proposing basement excavation. There is a retaining wall that would need to be removed, which is documented in the arborist report. There is some, uh, a mulch walkway that would go in. There is some other landscaping. But the structure itself, you can see, has been designed actually to be clear of those tree protection zones. So I, I wish Urban Forestry had gotten in touch with us earlier. We would have corrected that mistake. But the arborist report is clear, um, if they had read it. So I don't know whether they ended up looking at old plans. But that report that came in late to you, I'm just going to say, is in fact completely erroneous. Um, the last thing that I'll just say, Mr. Chair, is because I know I'll probably have to come back after the speaker to talk again about the elevation adjacent four-three-three, but there are no height variances now before you, whether for sidewall height or overall building height. Um, so in fact, what's happening is the massing is being moved further away from that property line. And you can see that it's really a first-story extension at the back that is opposite the home of four thirty-three. So we, we think we actually listened to the committee last time. We preferred to come back to the committee and have addressed its concerns rather than appealing. And we do think it's a substantive change to eliminate the variance that had caused, uh, the concern of the committee last time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Uh, you may have opportunity to add more when, uh, after we've heard the folks in opposition. So thank you. Um, let's move on to our speakers in opposition. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Just one, one moment and we'll. All set. Okay. Uh, name and address, please.
Thank you. The name is Matthew Helfand and the address is one eighty-one Bay Street.
And you're speaking on behalf of?
Four-three-three.
Four-three-three. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to delegate before committee today. My name, as I said, is Matthew Helfand. I represent Jane and David Atkins, who live at four-three-three Russell Hill Road. They are the house immediately to the south of the subject property at four-three-five. We attended at the committee, uh, in August for an application, uh, for a near identical proposal, which was refused by the committee. And I'm here today urging the committee to refuse this application. I'll reiterate one key point that was raised by the applicant's agent. Um, and I think it's important to emphasize the grade differential between the two properties. Four-three-five and four-three-three are located at a point on Russell Hill Road where there's a significant downward slope. And it, the slope is so significant that there's actually a grade differential of up to two meters between the two property at the center, at approximately the center between four-three-five and four-three-three. And what that means, members of the committee, is that any impacts are going to be significantly magnified. What is shown on paper is not reflective of the reality because of that significant grade change. Now, as far as we can tell, the applicant has made one change to the application, which is the removal of the sidewall height variance. But I think it's important for the committee to recognize that the massing itself is still there. This is the old plan. This flat portion, we can't, oh, these are his, well, these are his plan. They're in the file. Okay, I'll forget. Oh, I'm, I, I.
Pull it up on the screen.
I apologize. That's, you're right. So I'll just forego it. Look, the point is the massing of that sidewall is. Look, the point is the massing of that sidewall is still there. The variance is technically removed, but there's been no actual changes to the building. In our view, the application that was refused and the one that's here is virtually identical. The reason that I know that there's no impact, no change to the massing is because the density hasn't changed by one decimal point. Neither has the length or depth. Now, I think the previous decision should be upheld. That's my submission. Uh, a proposed set of variances before the committee for a new building are always evaluated individually and collectively. And when the committee refused the last application, it was refused on the basis of the application as a whole. And for all intents and purposes, the application here today is the same one. And that matters for two reasons. The first is that from my client's perspective, they have the same objections because the same impacts will be felt. The massing proposed here through the length, depth, and density is too great, all of which is gonna create a building envelope that imposes over my client's property in, near their pool and rear yard amenity space exacerbated by this up to two-meter grade differential. We also see that three private trees are still proposed to be removed. Eleven are proposed to be injured. And this is the first time I saw that Urban Forestry memo, but I, I disagree with the applicant when he says that it's erroneous. Because in fact, Urban Forestry, if you go back to the first application, initially recommended refusal. They then had some change and now have gone back to refusal. I haven't been part of those applications, but the idea that Urban Forestry would be mistaken when they've actually looked very closely at this application and are now recommending refusal of two variances, I think should be upheld. And, and finally, and I'm not gonna dwell on this point greatly because Mr. Gosh is not here to defend himself on this point, but the new member should be aware that this house that's proposed to be demolished is the house of a former prime minister. This prime minister, he lived there, um, when he was the finance minister. And I think even though this application is not, um, you know, it's not reflective of, it, it's not protected, right? The house is not protected under the OHA. It's still not desirable to destroy the house of a former prime minister. Now, there's also a process concern, which is the second reason why I think this should be refused. Um, and I don't think there's enough that's changed from the last application to this one, which would warrant a departure from the committee's previous ruling. Uh, it's practically the same development. And I recognize an applicant has a right to refile an application. That is true. But each application needs to be tested on its own merits. But the merits have already been evaluated. And I think this may be a different story if this was something like the Walker Avenue application you heard earlier where, you know, much deliberation, but there was a lot of, there was changes that were made from then to now, which would warrant a different decision. Here, there's no substantive changes. The massing is still there. And if the applicant wanted to seek approval of the same development, like they're doing now, they should have appealed. The applicant has a right to appeal decisions. Neighbors do not. And if the applicant is inviting the committee to make a di- a decision that's different from its previous one, I think that raises the issue of inconsistency. Um, and I think through an appeal, the full matter could be tested. So I'm suggesting that it be refused. And the prime minister, John Turner, sorry, I didn't mention that right, but that, that's the prime minister who lived here. It was his house.
Uh, thank, thank you for your presentation. Any questions for this presenter, Mr. McKay?
Well, just, I'm just, I'm just contrasting what the last one was. So has the building length and building depth, have they changed?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next person that we have. Okay, go back to the agent. Pardon me. Mr. Brodsky.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Hi, you heard the, uh, agent on behalf of, uh, the neighbor.
Sir.
Could you pres- uh, provide some rebuttal, please?
I, I can, Mr. Chair, and, and I'm gonna suggest to this panel, this is a case where the facts really do matter. And I just wanna go through four of them just to rebut the points made, uh, by my friend to you. First, there's a suggestion that you shouldn't allow this house to be demolished because, uh, a former prime minister lived there. And last time, my friend suggested to the panel that it's the only prime minister to have lived in Toronto. Well, history would say otherwise. Uh, Mr. Mackenzie was here and actually represented the Yorkies riding. Mr. Turner actually didn't represent a Toronto riding and actually represented an Ottawa riding and lived in Ottawa when he was prime minister, though I acknowledge he moved back to the city afterwards. Mr. Meehan lived here. Mr. Mackenzie King lived here. And interestingly, Mr. McDonald plotted his political comeback from a house in downtown Toronto. So facts matter. But in any event, it's irrelevant. The house isn't designated and has no status under the Ontario Heritage Act. And the city would actually be compelled to issue a building permit under section thirty-three of the Planning Act if plans are presented to the city for an as-of-right dwelling. So I, I don't think that should be a concern of the committee. Second, facts matter in terms of the trees. Yes, Urban Forestry with the initial application recommended refusal. My client then revised the application to decrease the length and depth and to eliminate excavation under the rear terrace. And as a result of that change, Urban Forestry then withdrew its recommendation for refusal and recommended standard conditions. That has not changed from the last application. What has changed in the Urban Forestry report that you have before you late, and I acknowledge my friend would not have had a chance to read it because Urban Forestry did a disservice to everyone by sending it late. They indicate their concern results from excavation under the rear terrace. And the Arborist report is crystal clear that that is not proposed. So it is an error on Urban Forestry staff. Um, and so we would recommend having the standard conditions imposed. That would be cleared up through an injury application submitted, should the committee see fit to allow the variances. Third fact that matters, staff, um, were able to find the survey for me. There is a grade change, but I don't think it's fair to suggest that it is as dramatic across the property as my friend suggests to you. And if you don't mind zooming in on that survey, and we can track the elevations or the survey marks on both properties moving from Russell Hill on the left to the right. And I apologize for having to do this, but if you look close to Russell Hill on both sides of the property line, we see datum elevations of one six seven point two-three, one six six point nine. We see on my client's property, one six seven point six-nine. We see on Mr. Helfand's client's property, one six seven point six-two. There's almost no change in elevation at Russell Hill. You only see the dramatic change in elevation that my friend suggests. If you get to the back, near where it says part on his client's property, at the rear corner of his hat, client's house, you see one six eight point three-six, and above that, one six eight point three-four. And then on my client's side, you see one seven zero point three-three. That's the two meters that my friend urges you is gonna cause a significant, significant impact. But that's where the one-story portion of the house that my client's proposing will be located. Back in the middle of the house, near where it says carport, you'll actually see there's almost no grade change. And that's where the main structure of the dwelling will be located. So I don't think the elevation has the impact that my friend would suggest to you. And finally, he suggested to you, first he said there were no changes, and he knew that because there was no change to the FSI. And then he said that there were no substantive changes. I disagree with both points. If I could ask staff to pull up the plans and find the south elevation, and I'm also then gonna go to the front elevation. This is the change on that south elevation, and it's the interesting part about the side. Uh, sorry, just if you could go down one more. I'll come back to the front. Sorry, that's the rear. Apologies, one more. That's the one. Thank you. You'll see on the left, and again, I apologize, it's small. There's two measurements there. One is the overall height and one is the main wall height. And the main wall height is nine point four-four. The building height is twelve point seven-nine. It's a sloped roof design, and you can see those dormers in the sloped roof, now significantly reduced in scope, such that no wall height variance is required. And it's measured to the underside of the eaves of the sloped roof. That's the change, frankly, that Mr. Helfand complained about last time on the height of his client when he said, quote, primarily wall height, close quote, that will be felt as an impact. I went back and listened to the YouTube. The front elevation, if I could ask staff to go up, will then show you where those dormers sit and why there isn't the impact that Mr. Helfand suggests. You can see the dormers on the side, the slight protrusion, and you can see the sloped roof, and you can see the underside of the eaves for the wall height variance. It is a big change. We did listen to the committee. And there were almost no concerns expressed last time with FSI length and depth. It's what's found in this neighborhood. What we have done is address this sidewall concern by eliminating the scope and bulk of those dormers that triggered it last time. And now frankly, from a height perspective, have an as-of-right condition. And it's the one-story portion that really extends beyond the length and depth. And I would submit to the committee, there's no impact from that. So I do think facts matter here. I do think there's been a significant change. I don't think there's any impact on the trees. And I do think this is now a meritorious application that is different for the committee to approve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Let me just see, uh, Mr. Clay, you've got question for Mr. Brodsky?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I'm, I may have asked the same question the last time. Uh, but the, um, the massing on, uh, the side adjacent to four thirty-three, the current massing. It looks like, if you, you know, if you look at street view, there is, uh, arguably the two or three-story, uh, portion of the existing building with a sloped roof above. So characterize the existing condition of the existing building to what you're proposing in the new structure. Is it similar, more or less the same? Is it going to be dramatically higher than what is there now?
Um, Mr. Chair, I would say to you just a few things. I would say it is similar, but there are some differences. Um, if staff don't mind, um, in our presentation package, pulling up either the site plan on page two or that other plan I was showing you on page three, cause three, Mr. Chair, do you, Mr. Clay? We've got the green outline of the existing house on that, so you can see where it sits. So it is similar, but at the front, you can see how there is massing in that corner where there wouldn't be massing today, closer to the front of the property. Um, so that, that is a difference. The height of the overall buildings are the same. That's in fact why there is no height variance. There's an overall height limit of twelve meters in, uh, this area. But there's also an exception that allows you to repeat or replicate the height of the existing dwelling. And we have done that, and that's why there's no height variance. So it's a similar height. But I would, I think I would be misleading this committee if I didn't say that there is a bit more massing on that side because it's been filled in. But it's also been pulled back a little bit, although the portion of the existing structure at the rear, it, that, that larger, uh, multi-story component doesn't go all the way to the back. Uh, but that's also why there's a one-story portion of the proposal back there. So I do think it's similar. It has been pulled back, but it is a longer wall along that property line.
Right, but, but what you're saying is the longer wall portion is mostly forward rather than rear. So, uh, you had mentioned there's a carport, um, associated with the neighbor. So that carport area is where, um, the new structure will be, um, adjacent to it. Uh, and, and what you're saying, I think what you're saying is that as you go deeper into the rear of the lot, um, you're, the massing, um, fades a little bit because you're down to a one-story portion rather than the two or two and a half that you have.
That's correct. There is a sloped roof. So, so it, it, there is a sloped roof for the upper story and then you, for the third story. Uh, that comes then down to the second story, and then it is the first story that extends, although not quite as far as the rear wall of four thirty-three.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I just have one question about the, and, and this may lead into forestry's interpretation. But the length and depth, uh, if, if we can just pull up the south elevation, uh, is measured to the, the rear of the one-story portion and, and/or the, the outdoor room. But it appears in the south elevation that, that the outdoor terrace, it looks like that's ex- excavated underneath. Is that accurate, or is this an old plan, or, or, or what is that showing underneath the outdoor portion there?
I think all that's showing goes to there is structural. So there's no, my understanding is, and this is confirmed in the variance and confirmed in the overall plans. And this maybe, you're right, this may be leading to the error from Urban Forestry is there's no excavation in that portion. Although if you looked, I suppose, at that south elevation, it could read that way. And a label that had said no excavation might have been helpful there, but, but there is no excavation there.
Okay. Um, so what do you think that's showing then? Or how would that outdoor terrace be constructed then?
Uh, it would be, um, my understanding is it's just constructed essentially on grade. There might be, um, some structural component required, uh, you know, modest excavation for, um, uh, a retaining wall. But if you look on the site plan, the extent of that rear terrace is outside the tree protection zones. So there might be, there might be some footings that need to be in for the terrace, but it's, it's outside the tree protection zone. So it's not being excavated to the full depth of a basement and not within the TPZ.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, so where are the cars in the, look at the basement plan, where are the parking area for the cars are? That is?
Is that, that's under the outdoor room, sir.
That's under, that's under the outdoor room, but not patio that extends from that. Okay.
And, and I can, and I can show that to the committee in two ways, just so it's not my assertion. If staff, actually, si- since you're in the plan staff, if you can go to the below-grade plan, which I think is, uh, goodness, page three, the basement floor plan. Yeah, you'll see, and again, I apologize, it's small, on the left is where I pick it up. There's a measurement of twenty-six point five-three. And you can see that's measured to the back of where the cars are parked. So if remember twenty-six point five-three, and I apologize to staff, I'm gonna ask you to go back to the presentation materials in page three, which had, you recall, the different measurements for the different levels or different stories. And we flagged the excavated basement at twenty-six point five-three on that plan. And it's to the back of that outdoor room.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. McKay, have you any questions for Mr. Brodsky? Okay, perhaps we'll take it into committee at this point? Okay.
Could we, could we just bring up the, um, Urban Forestry, uh, late letter, please?
That's just the chart though, right? That doesn't have?
Yeah, you gotta go further down.
That doesn't have any specific commentary? I don't know if I, I don't know if I, did you see it? No, I don't think I've seen it yet.
No, we didn't get it.
Okay.
Yeah. So the objection is length and depth?
And I apologize, Mr. Chair, if you're in committee, but it's page two that has tree thirteen mentioned.
Okay.
And you'll see the construction of the extended basement underneath the proposed rear terrace. That's the error. And then you'll also see for tree fourteen, construction of expanded basement underneath the proposed rear terrace. That's just not on these plans.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you, sir.
Go back into committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I'll start off because I was, uh, like Peter, I was on this one when it came forward previously. And, and I, frankly, I supported it, or I would have supported it had I had a chance to vote. Um, and, and I think my reasoning is, is, is similar, is that this, um, this proposal, the, the variances that we have before us are, with the exception of length and depth, but, uh, are, are relatively minor. I think my point about the length and depth is that, you know, in this particular neighborhood- my point about the length and depth is that, you know, in this particular neighborhood, um, it is not at all uncommon for, uh, homes to, um, be this size. This is a, a neighborhood which is characterized by, uh, particularly large homes, particularly gracious homes. Um, and, uh, it, this, in my view, doesn't seem, um, out of character, not only with new builds, but probably non-conforming existing, uh, structures. So, um, the proposal that we have before us, uh, removes what was the, when the original application, which was an extended basement, and I think that, that sometimes gets this committee's attention. I think in this instance, the extension is limited to the, um, the outdoor rooms in the rear, which is what's contributing to the length. Um, so I, I, I don't see this proposal as being inconsistent frankly with, um, you know, some of the prevailing new construction um, in this neighborhood. And frankly, if you just go and tour around the streets, um, there will be a, a number of examples which, uh, in many respects seem even larger. Um, it is a big lot, it's a wide lot, it's a deep lot. I think it can accommodate, uh, a structure of this nature. Um, I think with the, uh, changes to, I think it's the south side, um, wall, it, it does mitigate a little bit of the concern, but I also look at the existing structure that's there, and it is a, a large wall that's already in place. So it looks like the south wing of the, the existing home. So I, and it does have two, two and a half stories depending on where you mark it from, and it does have a peaked roof on top of it. So, in my view, the massing, uh, is already there. I don't see this as being dramatically incremental to that. Um, so I, I'm not sure I see the additional impact on the neighbor, um, uh, as much as I'm sure the neighbor does. Um, so, a-again, there, there are only five variances before us. Uh, in my view, with the exception of the length and depth and with the changes to the, the, the sidewall, uh, again, I don't think this is inconsistent with some of the new development, new builds, and I don't think the impact on the neighbors, the neighborhood is, is significant. And I, I would see this as being, uh, a minor application. So I, I can see supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Mr. Reed, Mr. McKay, any thoughts?
Sure, thanks Chair. Um, yeah, so I, I, like Larry, was on the, the panel last time we heard this application. Uh, I think just to start off the urban forestry, um, it is a shame that it came in so late. But looking at, I, I think they probably misinterpreted because of that, um, because of the side elevation drawing. It looks like the, uh, the terrace is, has a, a full foundation underneath it, but looking at the drawings, um, tree thirteen is located outside of the, the footprint of the, of the new house. And they, they, they did accommodate that, they chopped off a small corner of that, um, rear foundation to, to avoid that. Um, uh, so I think that, I mean, if this were to be approved, I think we would then just include the other urban forestry comments, uh, conditions. But, I mean, I, I do kind of, I get the point that the, the main, um, variance that I had an issue with last time in terms of the sidewall height has been removed. Um, and that's, that's an important element, even though visually the, the plans don't look very different. Um, that's the hard part with, with applications like this, I think, is that you're limited to examining the variances, right, and, and testing those in terms of impact. Um, but the other thing I did mention last time was that the elevation difference between this property and four thirty-three, and, and I, yes, I get that it, it's more extreme at the rear, but I think that that is something that needs to be considered. Um, I, I do think the length and depth variances, because they're limited to either, uh, below-grade or a one-story, I think that goes to limit their impact. Um, so really, it's just filling in that, that front, front right corner of the house. Um, but I think in terms of the actual variances, it's, it's, it's pretty minimal, I think, in terms of what, what they're going for. So, I don't know. I, I always have a hard time with ones like this. Like, it's a really beautiful house that obviously has important history to it, and it's a shame to see it um, be changed. But I, I think, uh, in the current format of this application, I'd have a hard time voting against it.
Mr. McKay, any thoughts?
Well, my thought is perhaps I should go back to urban forestry. We've had a lead submission from them, and, uh, they're recommending refusal. Now, it's been explained, but, uh, as to really what the true situation is, but perhaps urban forestry should see this again, uh, one further time.
Uh, just, uh, if, if, if we follow what Peter's recommending, putting the standard urban forestry conditions in, Gary, then the, the, the application would have to clear urban forestry i- if we do that. So, um, if, if in fact urban forestry made an error, then it should clear. If, if urban forestry still has a concern, then they would be in a position, they could deny this application.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not buying that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm saying, you know, I think they have to, I think they have to be certain, and as I say, they opined late, and if they've, if they've opined incorrectly, um, let's fix that first. That's my view, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Uh, for my part, I, 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 of, of homes that, uh, I think I've been also, uh, misled, I suppose, by the side elevation, which almost looked like the, um, basement extended way beyond, uh, the property. I am never in favor of, uh, structures that resemble something underground and, and different to what's above ground. Uh, I do find that both, uh, variances two and four appear excessive. But as Mr. Clay has pointed out, I think in this neighborhood, we've had, uh, length and depth numbers in, in this region. Um, I think the massing effect for the neighbor to the south, uh, is probably due also because it's, uh, it's currently got a driveway that is fairly clear, uh, the existing house. It's only a portion of it that, uh, looms over his property. And he will have, uh, a, a substantial structure next to him on the north side. Uh, and of course, it's exacerbated by the fact that his slightly low elevation towering structure behind him. But I note that just a little further up Russell Hill, there is another structure that's similar to what is being proposed. It's, uh, a new goal by the looks of it on, on Google Maps. So, uh, I think the neighborhood, uh, is in change and flux. The fact that Mr. Turner lived here is of no relevance to the issue.
Right.
So, uh, but I take Mr. McKay's, uh, point about urban forestry. Um, and I suppose maybe if we come out of committee and ask for some guidance, if, uh, we, Sabrina, if we, if we choose Mr. Reed's comment about urban forestry, would that suffice in the sense of urban forestry would have to clarify?
So through you, Mr. Chair, I, I think what Mr. Reed is, um, suggesting is, um, imposing conditions one and two from urban forestry. And urban forestry ultimately would have to clear those conditions. If they don't clear the conditions, then uh, the landowner will not be able to get a building permit.
And that would be sufficient to...
Yeah.
A safeguard?
Yes.
And I think that, that would certainly, uh, help from my perspective too. I think that would, uh...
And if it's an error, then they'd clear that condition, right?
So, okay. All right. Look for a, a motion?
I don't want to move this, yes.
I, uh, I'll, I'll move it, Chair. Um, based on, uh, all of our comments, and I think, you know, with the safeguards and, uh, that we will build in, um, this is, uh, an application which is, is improved from, uh, what we had before us previously. Uh, is frankly not inconsistent with the redevelopment pattern for this neighborhood. Um, I will, and I, and the variances, quite frankly, with the exception of length and depth, but I've spoken of that already, are really quite minor. Um, I think it's a supportive application. I'll move approval. Um, subject to forestry condition one and two.
Thank you. Do we have a second, uh? Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor? Three. All those in dissent? Thank you, Mr. McKay. Mr. Bronskill, you have your approval. Thank you. Okay. All right, fifteen.
I will, thank you everyone. Um, it's nice to get back into the groove. Uh, but I will have to, uh, um, I have to go now.
Sure, best wishes to that, yeah.
Take care of yourself and enjoy the event.
Yeah, I was gonna say enjoy, it's sort of a happy sad passion.
Yeah.
It, it will be interesting.
Yeah, and we have like a bunch of...
Is it being done in chambers?
Yeah, in chambers, someone gives a tribute, you know, and then like a little bunch of my family is gonna be there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number fifteen. Uh, number fifteen is seven twenty-three Cosburn Avenue. Uh, purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition and a rear second-story balcony. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and two photographs of the subject property. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agents online and no other speakers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Mason Farhoudi and, uh, elaborate, uh, two one seventy-five, MacCarty Court, Mrs. Saga.
Thank you, Mr. Farhoudi. Um, I, I, let me just see, my colleagues need a, a presentation. We don't have anybody in opposition. So, uh, any questions? None? Okay. It's, again, you, you, it's your lucky day today because no questions and no need for explanation. So we'll take it into committee and, uh, render a decision. Um, so this one's got two, uh, two, um, variances that are being requested, and both of them seem to be quite minor. So I don't see any issue with this particular, Mr. Reed?
Thanks Chair, I'm happy to bring a motion. I agree, I think it's, it's extremely straightforward. They're just adding another story, so these, um, the variances they're looking for are largely existing conditions, and, and I commend them for not, um, not going further than that. I think this is a very reasonable application, so I'll move approval without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay, thank you kindly. All those in favor? Uh, you have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number... Number sixteen, sixteen. Number sixteen is thirty-one Millbrook Crescent. Purpose of the application is to construct a new one-story detached ancillary structure, carport with two vehicular parking spaces in the rear yard abutting the laneway. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, six photographs of trees on the subject property, covering letter from the agent, uh, decision number affecting the property, and two form letters in support signed by owners and occupants of thirty-three Millbrook Crescent and thirty-four Spark, uh, Hall Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Excellent. Um, this one again.
Good afternoon, Jerry Eck...
Hi, good afternoon. Is that Jerry Eckberts?
Yes, it is.
Hi, good afternoon. Name and address, please, for the record.
Jerry Eckberts, Eckberts Engineering. Office is at two thirty-five Yorcland Boulevard in Toronto.
Thank you. Um, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you or require a presentation. Looks fairly straightforward from what I can see. None? Okay. No.
Well, Mr. McKay has a question for you. Just a quick question about, would you just ta, uh, speak to the, uh, the, um, sorry, there's a lot to, a lot of coverage here. So it jumps from five percent to eighteen point two one percent. Want to just address that issue?
Um, certainly, um, these are fairly narrow lots. Um, the, the, the parking that has been at the site has been open parking with, uh, without a, a structure. And, um, pretty much all of the, um, other properties that abut the laneway uh, also contain two parking spots, many with, uh, structures that go completely across the property. So, uh, while it, um, takes, uh, a, a large increase in terms of the percentage of the property, uh, it's, uh, only slightly larger than the sort of nominal, um, area that's generally accepted for an exo, um, ancillary structure. Um, so it's not going to be meaningfully different from, uh, the other parking situations along the, um, the laneway. And, and we are maintaining, uh, over fifty percent soft landscaping as required.
All right, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, I just have a quick one, and, you know, it's neither here nor there. Uh, it's going to be a carport, so the materials that will be at the, uh, on the ground, um, is that going to be gra- gravel by any chance, or are you putting a slab in?
We're putting concrete, um, slab which will have to be, um, sloped to accommodate the, uh, grading along the, the laneway.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm glad to see that you, uh, have fifty percent, uh, rear yard landscaping, because I think in the previous decision, uh, there was some deficiency from what I can read. Thank you. Uh, we'll take it into committee and look for, uh, a decision. Mr. McKay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to, uh, move approval of, of these two variances, Chair. Um, see, it's subject to an urban forestry condition number two. And, uh, so simply subject to that urban forestry condition, I, I, I move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second by any chance? Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sirs.
Thank you. Uh, number seventeen was deferred.
We're at lunch?
Oh, okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then, uh, we'll be back at two forty.
Thank you. Okay.